Okay, good evening. It is 6:04 PM. My apologies for the late start. I would like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. And now a moment of silence. We'll think about those who have gone before us. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Decker.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Pine.
Here.
Trustee Walrind. I know she's here. Trustee Walrind is there. And I know Deb's on her way. Also present is Deputy Clerk Judith and Attorney Gilchrist.
Excellent, all right. In that case, as advertised, I would like to entertain a motion to open a public hearing regarding Local Law Number Three of 2021, a local law amending Local Law Number One of 2018 pertaining to parking restrictions on certain sections of Elm Street in the village of Housick Falls.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are now in our public hearing at this point. I'm just going to quickly review the local law, what it says, and then we will open the floor to anyone who wants to voice any concerns or comments about this specific local law. In case you're here to talk about something else, we do have a people-to-be-heard section later, just for clarity, just for point of clarity here. Let me zoom in and get this local law up here on the screen. So this is Local Law Number Three, as mentioned before, with the purpose being to amend Local Law Number One of 2018. What it would do is it would modify the specific location here on Elm Street to fifteen-minute parking between the hours of 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and specifically the location is from the southeastern corner of Tact map parcel, as written there, and proceeding in a westerly direction for a distance of sixty feet. Now, in the last board meeting, we talked through a little bit of this local law, and I have the same pictures up, I think. Nope, that's not it. We had talked about specifically... Why is this not showing up? Come on, technology. Well, I have it on this screen. Pardon me one second. Well, while I work on the technical stuff, at this point, if you would like to speak or share a comment, feel free. Who would like to speak first?
I would just have a question. Is that sixty feet?
Yeah, sixty, sixty feet. Proceeding from the southeastern corner of the parcel and then heading west for a distance, a westerly direction for a distance of sixty feet. Again, as soon as I can figure out why it's not showing it... Let's see here, should be fine. There we go. Let's go way through all the stuff ahead. I don't know why I had it in the wrong spot, but I definitely put it in the wrong spot. So this is the quick version of the meeting tonight. As I get ahead. There we go. Okay. This is the parcel we're referring to right here. Let me give you a better view. Specifically, there's 53 Elm Street, North View. This is from Google Maps. Yeah, this is, it's pretty much the same things we discussed last time, and specific to just that location, and heading sixty feet west. So the corner is the corner where the poles are. Is that correct, Andy Neal?
It's closed from that point.
The corner from the parcel is probably a little bit further over, and they're heading that way. All right, any questions, comments on this specific law? So as with the standard local law, we introduce it in a meeting. We set a public hearing. When the public hearing happens tonight, we leave it open typically for thirty minutes or more, give people a chance to speak. Once we close the public hearing, then we have the option to pass the law, table the law, strike down, and not do anything, which looks like we'll be heading to later in the meeting. Any, I will give more opportunities, but if anybody else wants to speak regarding this, feel free. All right, in that case... Let me head way back to the announcements. All right, so I'm going to go through these real fast, and they are listed out in your agenda. We have our village holiday hours during the holiday season. The office will be open... The office closes at noon, so half-day on Thursday, the 23rd. As standard, as the standard hours we've been using, it'll be off Friday, the 24th. We'll also be off Monday, the 27th. It will be open on Tuesday, the 28th, Wednesday, the 29th, and a half-day on Thursday, the 30th. The offices will be closed on the 31st, normal for Friday and Monday, the 3rd, and office hours will resume Tuesday, on the 4th. I just wanted to get that out there. Additionally, for our other departments, they have a half-day on December 23rd, and they're off Friday, the 24th, and the same for the 31st, or the 30th is a half-day and off Friday, the 31st. So I just want to make sure everyone had that. The third one. In speaking with the attorneys for the class action settlements, we, a couple of us had asked them to come by into the village and do a couple workshops to help people sign, answer questions, have help going through the paperwork. We tried to state that it was going to be a big turnout, and they said, "Okay, cool." And then it was a really big turnout. And a lot of things got accomplished, and a lot of people got help, but at the same time, a lot of people were turned away, which was really unfortunate. So they have set aside another time to come back to the village. And the two dates are Friday, January 7th, from 8:30 in the morning to 6:30 PM, and it's Saturday, January 8th, from 8:30 in the morning to 5:30 PM. The one thing they're trying to do differently this time is to set, to schedule an appointment so they can anticipate times and needs and keep things moving. But it is important to get this information out there that we just, I think, agreed on this in the last day or two. So I'll get this up on the village website and on the social media for the village. They'll have it up on their settlement page as well. But I wanted to make sure that information was out there.
Rob, I think what they need to get out there too is that the paperwork that people need to get, to get paperwork done, is to have that ready, to get their water bill from the village. They don't have one.
So we were able to, in the last one, give the lawyers all of the digital documents for water bills. So if they come without a village water bill, they have, they have them on a file. They can print them out there. Town is a different story. I'm not sure what documents town residents would need, but we were able to give them both the village digital documents for that one pay period that they're specific to December of 2015, and also digital copies of the Rensselaer County property tax. So those sheets are available for them. So we were able to get that there for village residents. Mark, where's Mark? Were there other documents for town that they would need?
Well, the New York State Health Department's there for anybody who has the blood testing gone and didn't have paperwork to show that they have something done. So the health department did some of that information on what they needed. And then for the, for the town, no, we needed the tax, the tax...
Property tax?
Property tax bill from the village will still show up, or not from, it was a town tax bill. We should all go through that same file.
So there, there are some documents available, but it's worth making sure, because that tends to be the holdup is documentation. You can call that number or go to the settlement webpage, and there's a contact person there to contact for any questions.
They were part of the NUC's plan. The NUC's part of the plan having the proof of all, like if you were a tenant, having proof of a tenant.
Okay. Does that, does that answer it, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, great.
You can still have your blood tested, too. Did I miss that part?
What's that?
You can still have your blood tested, but it's got to be tested by the first.
I am under the impression that's the case. I don't know exactly. So you've heard it...
The river has no more appointments available, but you can just go over to Southwest, Southern Vermont.
Okay.
And they'll join you.
That's good to know, because I've had someone ask me that.
I know it wasn't our event, the lawyer's event, but it would have been helpful to have the information table out from the community before people got there, because they were kept interrupting the lawyers asking for questions about, "What do I need? How do I sign up?"
Yeah.
Which was very chaotic.
We had, I think, some of us had tried to say this was going to be a lot of, a lot of people, and it would help a lot of people, and we would need a lot of people there. And I just don't think they were quite staffed for what they, what they thought they were going to get, so... But yeah, that...
People were signing up in health department. And they said, "I thought I was signing up to see the lawyers, too, at the same time."
All right, so that's good to know. And I, we're going to have a discussion, I think, next week as Zoom call to plan out things like that. So I will pass that on. And it would make a lot more sense to have it way more organized, have a central table to start at, and then things like that. And then I have to find out if we're taking walk-ons, but...
I know they were also filling out paperwork on behalf of residents, like they were entering the computer system.
Yep.
I feel like some of our residents would be able to enter themselves, just put it on, you know, on paper. So it might be nice if they had copies of the actual forms available for people to use to fill out.
Bring that up, too.
I don't think that, it's not possible. It's not possible.
Oh.
Yeah. So it's the same thing.
I mean, I could do a lot of that.
Well, that's probably why I didn't have copies.
No.
Thank you.
Any, any other thoughts or comments or concerns about how the last one's run, so we can improve the next one?
Some of it was logistics, because, you know, we were... I, I was of a different mindset. I didn't think there's going to be a lot of people at that one. You know, it was targeting more of, of these guys, older people who weren't computer literate. We ended up getting everybody.
We did.
Everybody's afraid they're going to do it wrong and not get their money. Everybody's afraid they're going to get, you know, question them. Everybody's afraid that they're going to get, like, question number 32, be wrong, and not get their payment. I think that's what people want, the lawyers.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, I did it so that I would be commiserate with it, and I didn't find it to be that difficult, which I didn't think it sort of would be that much of an issue. A lot of people are just struggling with it, and, you know, I was surprised at the turnout. So going back to my original point was that we were originally only talking about using the meeting room at the armory, because that was space that I could commit to, you know, at my position with the town, you know, where I can't commit the hall, you know, with pickleball and things like that. We were talking about holiday events. I couldn't commit that space. You know, I could just commit. And then the health department, you know, ended up setting up outside in the hallway. So, yeah, to take on, to get out into the drill hall, you know, we have to clear that with the armory.
All right, yeah.
And I would make sure that people had correct instructions. We walked in. It's just said that people were going to the log table. They'd sign up, and then they couldn't stay, so they crossed my name off. But if their names carry over the next day, or it's sort of the next day, they're highlighted. So nobody knew any of this stuff.
Okay.
It was, it was, I mean, I, once you went through it, I could go tell all the, to the other people, "This is what you need."
Right, right.
And people could stand up, and it's a lazy part, and just stand there waiting.
Yeah.
And you sign up, sign up for it.
Right. So, yeah, we're going to pass all this on. We're going to get it, hopefully, a lot more organized and planned out, so... And the big thing to take away is, please call this number to set up an appointment now so that you can lock in your time, and that's expected. That's something they're doing differently this time. Okay.
But we can't guarantee that, though, because some, some of these people are...
Oh, yeah.
...on time, some people take up time.
Yes, they, they're, it's, it's, yeah. They're going to plan as best they can, but some people may take longer, some people may not show up. There will probably be more walk-ins than they expect, even if they don't say walk-ins. They're, well, to, you know, yeah. All right, and the deadline for filing is January 24th, 2022. We did receive trustees a request from the Housick Falls Community Alliance Church to use the Wood Park on Wednesday, December 22nd, at 5:30 PM for the Forever in Our Hearts Candlelight Service of Remembrance. And residents are invited to bring pictures of loved ones to hang on the strand of lights around the gazebo. Trustees, if you are okay with this... Oh, I don't have it on the screen, sorry. There we go.
Those that you've lost, it's the remember ceremony for those that have passed.
Yep.
Candor's prayers.
If trustees, if you are good with approving this usage, I'll take a motion. All right, we have a motion from Bobby, second from Megan. Any questions, discussion on it? All in favor? Opposed or abstentions? All abstained, because I belong to that church, so it makes sense for me to abstain. So otherwise, six oh. Okay, great, thank you. All right.
It's not a big religious thing, right?
No, it's a, it's a ceremony.
It's not short.
Okay, list of mayor updates. Some of these aren't very in-depth, but I just want to make sure people know this. The local wells, the two wells commonly known as the Wysocki and La Crosse wells, were selected by New York State DEC as the village's future water source as part of their superfund process and sort of the, the next step in our pursuit of an alternate water source. This was issued through their Record of Decision, which has been officially announced. And the state is moving forward to develop the two local wells into the future water source. Let me quickly get Dave Engel on via Zoom for a minute, because Dave wanted to speak briefly about this. And if anybody had any questions about it, we could certainly start, we could certainly take questions on that. So give me just one minute on that to get him on, and I will bring him up on the screen. And we will see Dave Engel way larger than anyone would want to see Dave Engel, but don't tell him I said that. While we wait for Dave to join on this, I'm going to continue on through the PowerPoint. And I'm sure my computer will start talking to me when he, when he hops in. Okay. And it's doing the thing again. Okay, and the, the links for both the rod and just general information from the state is available on the links there. I literally just go into Google and type in Housick Falls DEC, and the page always comes up if you want to see that. So I will wait for just, I'll come back when I have Dave on, and we'll come back to that. While we wait for Dave to join, the Woods Brook Buyout Program has begun. Thank you, Kevin, for the picture right here. Demolition of the first property has begun. This one is actually 7 Hall Street. And just as a reminder, this was a document that we had put together, that the state had put together way back before we got to Brant. All of these were ones that were initially targeted, but what I've done is I've put red arrows on the specific property that will, that are either definitely coming down or will be definite in like, in probably about a couple of weeks since we worked through last thing. But definitely right now, 7 Hall Street has come down, 5 Hall Street, which for some reason I don't have an arrow on, is coming down, and 3 Hall Street is coming down. And 115 Main Street is coming down. The big, large building, or 114 Church is not, but the one next to it is something that we have acquired, and it's coming down. And the last one is 27 Elm Street, which if you know the Woods Brook culvert, as it weaves its way through here, it's supposed to be this blue path, but it's not quite accurate. It actually goes around back in this way and comes through. That's where the culvert empties into this large area, which has been cut off by half because of the basement of that building. So we were able to acquire, and we're demolishing these properties through the million dollars that the state made available to us. And there is money and plan starting that once we have all of this area in the village's hands and done, what will be the next thing? What's going to come with the land? We know that, you know, keeping it open and preventing any future flooding in this area is the priority. And also, what do we want to do with a really nice piece of land in the middle of the village? I think I have Dave Engel on the line. So let me get him in here. He's connecting. Dave, are you there?
Yes, I am.
I'm going to put your, you on the projector screen, so just, just be aware that we are all staring at your face right now.
Oh, cool.
All right, hi, Dave. I'm going to mute myself and turn the floor over to you. What did you want to say regarding the, the rod, the issuance of the rod?
Okay, I did not realize you were going to lattle immediately, but as indicated in the agenda, and as most everyone knows from reading in the news or hearing the news, DEC issued a Record of Decision a couple of weeks ago endorsing the, the development of two new supply wells commonly known as the, as the La Croix... Oh, God, what's the other name? Help me out, Rob.
Wysocki.
Thank you, Wysocki. I'm sorry. The Wysocki-Lacroix wells, those wells are located to the south of the village in terms of the flow of the river. It's upstream of the village. This is a proposal that was first put out there some time ago. As most everyone knows, the village commented on the proposal several months ago and generally endorsed this as the remedy in terms of the village's water system. We know there have been a variety of viewpoints expressed on this matter over the last several years. And of course, the process to get here has taken several years. We can all recall that back in 2016, it was announced that the department would put the development of a new water supply out in front of everything else in terms of resolving the environmental problems in Housick. And I think we all expected the process might go a little quicker than it has, but here we are at the end of 2021, and the proposal is out there. Now, once the proposal was put out there, the companies have 60 days to either accept or reject it. And if they reject it, then the state, DEC, goes ahead with the project utilizing state superfund money. So one way or the other, this remedy, to use the term that's used in superfund, will proceed, and it will proceed with work commencing sometime in the new year. Between now and then, we anticipate that there will be discussions with DEC and the companies. And if this follows the pattern, as typically occurs in most superfund cases, the companies will opt to pay for the work, do the work themselves, rather than to be in a position where DEC does the development work and then sues for recovery of costs with penalties. So we have reasonable assurances that this is going to go ahead next year. It's going to take a couple of years to have the project completed. There's a lot of moving parts there, including getting property interests and right-of-ways and all of that, and then working out the transactions that would inevitably be required between the companies and the village. We expect that there will be discussions amongst the village, the companies, and DEC starting sometime in January after the holidays. So that's where we're at. And I think most of us view this as a step in the right direction. We're not quite home yet, and I would just caution patience and forbearance as we go through all the process to make sure this gets done over the next two years.
So two quick things that I just want to add to that, and thank you, Dave. The first is that we will remain with the new water source. We will still have the gap filtration system. The second thing is, part of the plan is to, is to maintain one of our current wells as the backup well, which wouldn't be used often, but in case there was a need to shut down one or both of the new wells, the old well would, would be the case. That is something that we, as a village, have tried to work around. We don't want our final remedy solution to be connected to the hotspot and the contamination in any way. So we are continuing to advocate for the development of a third well so that all, both the main wells and the backup well are not connected to the offer right by the hotspot. Does anybody have any questions, trustees, or anyone here for Dave about this? We're all good, Dave?
Hey, that's good news. I can go do something else, and I will wait to hear from you for our executive session in an hour or two, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you, Dave.
Sure. Yep, thank you. Talk to you later.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Ended for all. All right, great, thank you. No, Zoom, I do not want an update. Thanks, okay. All right, next set of updates. Oh, so I did talk through what properties were coming down. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. And we have a lot of business for change orders to, to continue with demolitions, which we'll get into in a bit. The Woods Brook Drainage Improvement Project, which is the one outside the village within the town, the extension to go into August 1 of 2022 has been officially approved, which is great. The work is finishing at the first site and will commence late winter, early spring at the second site. Mark or Neil, is there any additional update on that? Did they finish the work completely by the golf course?
They've got to come back. They've got to come back. Just next year to finish up a couple of recent pages.
Okay.
And maybe a couple more things.
Okay, all right, great.
Where am I getting to for, for Site One?
Where is that?
Site One, the final thing.
Oh, the final thing we were waiting for. Oh, that's great. That's great news, okay. All right, we've been talking about internet access to the locations around here, the New White Highway Garage. We had hoped to have wireless access today. I do have it, but not with the equipment I wanted. Little frustration with the local provider of networking equipment that fell through. I'm not going to throw under the bus particularly publicly now, but I'm very frustrated with them. But I'm going to order a couple of things, and we had tech support out here to get me connected today, which I am, which is why we could use Zoom. And the rest is coming soon. We hit another snag with the installation at the water plant, but I have some emails back and forth with Spectrum to get our agreement in place for the final installation date to be set. So hopefully, by next meeting, that's done. All the other locations are complete. We had two extra ones beside the three locations for the village as part of the plan to reduce the cost of installation. Those are online. Those are online, we took the first month of bill and now we shut them off, so they're there in case the, uh, football, baseball field wants internet access in the future, or if we ever got money for like, say, a grant for the Greenway, the infrastructure is there if we ever wanted to get, um, internet access there. Um, I wanted to talk briefly about COVID, and I'm not gonna say much more than what's in the agenda. Right now, cases are, I think, at all-time highs in the town and in a lot of the area, it's, it's, it's bad. We are averaging probably seven to eleven new cases a day. We've had as high as, you know, we've, we've ranged all over the place between two or three new cases a day and fourteen new cases a day. But we've been averaging about fifty, sixty, seventy active cases. It's a hard time, we know that our governor just issued a mask mandate or proof of vaccination for indoors and in business, which is why we're in here with the wide open space. Um, we know that regional hospitals are canceling some or all elective surgeries, um, because of the caseload. In fact, Southwestern Vermont Medical has started to, I think, postpone elective surgeries that were only the ones that require overnight stays for, I think, a week because, um, caseloads are high. Um, and we know about the Omicron, um, being studied crazy amounts right now. The early takes are coming in, they're still kind of early, so I, I even hesitated to put up some of the things here because it's still developing, but it is seemingly looking to spread a little bit more easily than Delta. Slightly lower efficacy of vaccine when compared to Delta, and I, I wanna emphasize slightly, there was some information today that came out about that. Um, the one thing people have been looking for is are the illnesses more serious and are hospitalizations up? They have not seen that yet, which is a very, very good thing. But it does seem like we are set for another wave of this, which is really, really frustrating. And everyone is really frustrated for a lot of different reasons, and I understand why, but I just wanna focus on a few key points and get past all the other stuff. We know it's airborne, we know that wearing masks lowers the likelihood of getting and spreading, we know that some masks work better than others, um, and we, we know that indoors is a big deal, we know that vaccinations greatly lower the likelihood of getting and later spreading COVID-19. Both of those are independently accurate, it's not just getting it, but if you have a breakthrough case, you are much less likely to spread that breakthrough case, there's a lot of science and studies on that. Um, we know that there is growing research that vaccinations wane at about the six-month mark, and boosters are available, I'm actually signed up to get my booster because I had to wait till my six-month period was over, and we know that children have been eligible for a while. So, I just wanted to put that out there, urge people, uh, to make their decisions and be safe and be smart, um, and be healthy, because no one wants to be quarantined during the holiday season. Yes?
I have a question, you had the back, another one?
Uh, oh, wrong one. Oh, now I hit the wrong button.
No, you're going. This is, this is on part two. Governor Hopeless has issued a mask mandate or proof of vaccination for indoors, businesses, whatever.
And multiple?
Well, it's like, if I have an explanation, which I do have, I don't need to wear masks, including here.
I honestly do not know, because as soon as it came out, there was frustration, and there were counties, including ours, who said, "We're not going to enforce it." So, it's a very gray area, I have been in businesses who have had to tell people they cannot be here unless they are wearing a mask, and people have left. The business owners hate it, they don't wanna be the bad guy, but it is what it is. It's very, and that's part of the frustration, it's very confusing.
Nobody has a concise, this is what you need to do, everybody does everything differently.
Yeah.
I think it's supposed to be either one or the other. I think it's supposed to say you gotta wear a mask or you have to show proof.
That is, that is my understanding, that it, you can do one or the other.
That's not my understanding at all, a lot of people are. I don't know, it's part of business owners' game.
Yup, yup.
Well, my understanding is that if the business requires proof to come in, and everybody has to prove it, then you want to wear a mask. If they don't require, she said, she says you gotta wear a mask.
Well, I'm saying, that's your opinion.
No, I, that's the government, that's just not my understanding. I don't know what to do, is that just what she said?
If you talk to somebody, it's, it's from the government, everybody's got a different opinion.
My understanding, and I would also focus in on business owners, because they would need to know this, that it either is you have to be masked, or if you can show proof of vaccine, you don't have to be. And there is the New York State app, which you can use to show as, as proof of vaccination.
So if I carry my vaccine card and I walk into a business, and they said you're not wearing a mask, I can say, "Here's my card"?
Private businesses, I think, can make their own policies and enforce their own policies further than what the state mandate is. So in those situations, I would defer to the business owner. If they have a policy that may be stronger. But that's, you know, that's the frustration, it's all very confusing, yeah.
Can I just say, as a business owner, the, the idea is, don't take it out on a business owner, you're just trying to do the job and, and do what you're doing. And we occasionally get people that are hopeful around it,
Yup.
and, and our employees don't need that, so I would just say, "Wear a mask if they ask you to wear a mask." If someone's checking vaccine cards going in, show your vaccine card and that's good enough.
I really-
Don't take it out on a business.
I really appreciate that, and I know, I went to Stuart's, uh, yesterday morning to get my coffee before going to school, and I got yelled at by somebody about my leadership on this, and I'm like, "This isn't me, this is, this is not, I, I don't have this, you know, this is not my authority, this is the governor's." But, but, yeah, don't take it out on business owners. Everyone's frustrated about all of it, do your best to have patience. Love on the people.
Well, that's why I, I, um, Thorpe's has, has the trick boosters.
Yes.
And they also have, um, the regular shots.
Yes.
And, uh, Southwestern Vermont Medical Center, you don't have to give a mock present, you go there for driving vaccinations. And the Retsah County Health has walking, or walking days on Tuesday and Thursdays from two to four o'clock for, uh, vaccines. It's got my boosters, but did I know that?
That's great, that's great. I, I, we, I, I will say we have been blessed with a lot of good opportunities around here for vaccinations and testing. Like, I'm, I've lost count the amount of times I've been tested over it. Southwestern Vermont, because of Colts, but anyway. Alright, um, number six. We've begun a bathroom redesigning the municipal building. I do wanna start off by saying I should have talked to the trustees when we started this, I had uh, recommendations brought to me, I went to some folks to say, "Can we do this?", and it was a yes. It made sense, we started to do it. And then some people were like, "Hey, why are we doing this? What's going on? What's the plan?" So I just wanna address that, my apologies, board, my apologies, people for not getting the heads up. What we've had for years is a weird setup, a ladies' room with two toilets and no walls, and when you open the door, everything is there to be seen. A men's room with a single toilet, no stalls, walls, same visibility problem. And an office bathroom that is so cramped that you have to walk in, move to in front of the toilet, shut the door, and move to, to the door to get to the sink. And there's space back there, which also you can't use, and it's, it's just a mess, it's like in the tiniest closet. So the first step we did was to take one of the two toilets out of the ladies' room and put that into the office room, so that's actually a legitimate bathroom, which we have done. But then, there were a lot of people who were voicing concerns about losing the space in the ladies' room. Uh, in particular, I had a couple people who say, "I have younger kids, having a larger room with two toilets has been amazing." We got it, I heard it. What we're going to do, what the long-term plan is, I wanna get feedback from the trustees, but what I would like to do, and I've talked through this with Neil, and he is good with making this happen, and I actually spoke with the chief about this earlier, and he was all about it as well. What I'd like to do is, the current ladies' room, if you haven't seen it recently, there, you, we lost space as you walk into the left, that's now the, the bathroom inside for the village office. You go around the corner, that's where the stall is. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to convert that into the men's room, and add a urinal next to the sink with a wall. And then we have two toilets, and the smaller bathroom goes to the men. I'd like to take the current men's room, expand it about three feet into the chief's office, set up two stalls, and that becomes the ladies' room. That actually would restore the original footprints of that building, because there used to be a larger bathroom on that one side. So what it would end up with is, it would solve the visibility problems, it would give two stalls with privacy in the ladies' bathroom. It would give us space on the wall to put on a changing table for both the ladies and the men's room, which we don't have, which I don't understand how we don't have it, we just haven't had it. And that would give us much more functional bathrooms, and it will confuse the heck out of us for like, five years as we head to the wrong room and have to, we'll have to put big letters, "Men, this one is for men, not ladies", and back and forth. So, trustees, that's the plan we're moving forward, we, we've discussed. I wanted to know what your thoughts were on that, and how that sounds to you.
So, it's good to me, I, I was surprised to see it happening because, uh, being involved with all community events and seeing so many people use the bathroom, I was kind of taking a basket. We took apart the ladies' room. Sometimes there's five or six people waiting in line who don't use that bathroom, so, then when I saw it, I think that your plan moving forward is a good plan. I think we should, maybe get some contractors and get some ideas on how we can accomplish that.
Okay, and again, that's, that, my messaging, not getting information out, not talking together ahead of time, that's all my bad, so, my apologies on that.
It helps to get the information so-
Oh, absolutely.
-when people, constituents ask the question.
Yup. Yup.
If I could, Mayor, if the mayor and I spoke about this earlier, and if you could just go walk in here, we're in conversation with the, uh, courtroom office about a grant, um, that possibly finds some funding for expansion of the courtroom in the village. So, they're gonna get back to me probably by mid-year, to tell me, one, if there is grants, and two, we can get that. If we can, and I would strongly suggest we set up a building committee, or if you wish to have, have a title, and we can kind of design to include the action as well, we might be able to get some, some massive space built on the old offices paid for by, by the state courts. And I should have the answer, and I'll check with her again tomorrow, she researched you in the last week, so.
Work wouldn't be starting until the new year anyway, right Neil? Any substantial changes wouldn't start until the new year, right? Until after the new year?
But we're planning on completing this before, in, in, in the spring, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So could we use our ARPA money for the bathrooms?
Yes, we could. And that's gonna lead to another discussion about ARPA funds, and, I know, um, Bobby Decker had reached out to me and, uh, I was gonna, I was supposed to send an email and I didn't, so sorry, but we'll talk about that when we get there with ARPA funds. But yes, this would qualify. Alright, um, and the one, the one thing, uh, trustees, I forgot to mention, and I, I wanted to thank Neil on this, um, I, I, I saw a deal that someone was getting rid of an office desk and an office copier that was an almost nearly exact match to our current copier. Neil, or someone in the DPW went over, picked it up, brought it back, and within three weeks, the existing copy machine we had, like, basically exploded, toner. Uh, so we were able to get the one that we got for free running. But in the meantime, we're looking into upgrading that to, um, a larger, more recent sort of heavy-duty copy machine, possibly color. We don't have the imminent need now, because we were able to get our tech support people over, and they got the scanning function working back with our computers, and it's all set and good to go, but it was a nice, uh, it was nice to have one waiting in the wings. So. Any questions, um, trustees, on, on the updates? Alright, we still have, um, a public hearing open. So, let me just, before we go to the people-to-be-heard normal section, let me see if there's anybody else who wants to speak specifically to the new local law? Alright, hearing none of them?
I spoke last week, so.
Yup.
No sense of favor, you got me.
That's alright, thank you. Um, hearing no other comments, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing? Thank you, Deb, thank you, Megan, further discussion? We have to vote on closing, right? All in favor of closing the, uh, public hearing? Aye? Opposer, abstentions? Alright, carries, we have that business later in the meeting, so unless you guys wanna jump to now, we can go to later in the meeting for that. Uh, now I'd like to open up the people-to-be-heard section, this can be on anything. Uh, when you're called upon, please begin with your full name and street address. You can share or speak, uh, what you'd like to discuss. Just as a reminder, I audio-record all of our meetings, they end up on our Village YouTube page. Um, just to get an idea of how many people would like to speak about any particular thing tonight, does anyone wanna speak? One, two, three? Okay, I'll, I'll kind of keep it, just try to keep it within a four-minute time span. Would you like to go first?
Sure.
Go for it.
So, uh, Mayor, I, um, my name is Cliff Belden. Uh, I'm, uh, living in, uh, the town of Uzic, I mean, East Uzic Road, I own 15 Church Street, Uzic Provisions.
Okay.
So, I, I wanted to talk about the new signs that went up this week or last week for parking in front of the building, in, on that corner. So, you and I had had a discussion back in the summer about the issue of parking in downtown, and at that time, you had, uh, indicated that this was something that board, the trustees were interested in, and were going to get together a group that involved businesses before significant changes in signage occurred. And so I was surprised this week when, uh, new no-parking signs and new hour limitation signs, uh, in front of the building went up. And so I would, uh, request that we have a process to talk about parking in downtown. I don't understand the reason for the signage that went up, and it, uh, it took away two parking spots during business hours, and then spots for tenants that, you know, they're all being pushed down into that lower lot, which is, uh, there is no, um, parking. So, those are my concerns, and-
Sure, and I'll, I'll, I'll certainly speak to those, and my apologies again for not getting the message out sooner as to what was going on. This is Uzic Provisions right here, you're talking about a sign, I think, that exists right here?
Correct.
And then another sign across the street right here?
Correct.
So, those new signs, um, are restoring the original signage that was done when the Route 22 project was done. That's my understanding. So, there were no decisions made about changing the parking laws or parking rules, and we still are hearing probably monthly, more and more frustrations and concerns about parking as a whole. And we are going to have that, we need to look at everything, not just within individual roads, but how it fits within everything in the area. We do wanna have that conversation, I'm sorry to not give you the heads up that this was coming. The rationale, I think, for those signs is related to viewpoints and traffic, related to snowplows, and related to some of the trucks that go through there. So, my apologies on not giving you the heads up that it was coming. It was not a unilateral decision, it was a restoration of what had been down for, what I've heard is, many years.
Correct, so, so since we've owned the building, since we've been looking at the building in 2018, those signs were not there? So, again, um, and I just will remind you that there's, it had a harassment around our business, so why the signs had to go up, you know, right now? It, it's, it's a little surprising to me. And I, I just, you know, we need to get to it, I, I don't understand what the two to six AM limitation on the other side of the street, why that needed, what's the emergency or the, the import of having that there?
Anyone on this one right here?
Correct, no parking two to six AM. I, it just, it, you know, there's no sign in front of companies, don't park two to six AM, but there's a sign right there that went up last week. So, again, I, I just don't understand it. So, I'd like to have a better explanation, better than for restoring what was there ten years ago? That, that doesn't fly for me, based on the history that we've had with the highway department.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I mean, is there an issue that we, I am in that business quite a bit, and I don't see a big issue there. But, um, I, I just would, you know, it took away two parking spaces, it took away the parking in front of the massage therapist that's there, and other businesses that's there. And, and again, so.
Where's the massage therapist, I'm sorry?
So, there's a sign right here that says, "No parking here to corner", and it took away the spot that's right here, and a spot that's right here, the crosswalk goes between it. So, so there's a sign that went up right here saying, "No parking two AM to six AM, and no parking here to corner."
So there was a spot on each side of the parky, of, of the sidewalk?
Correct, that is out of the intersection, it's not in the intersection. So, again, I, I, I just don't understand it, and maybe we can talk about it later, or if your team wants to go down and look at it, and, uh, I'd just love to get some clarification from you, that that is something that has to be done, for what we think about the whole parking situation, because I'd really like to assess it as a whole.
Okay, I will get, I'll get some more information, and I'll follow up with you, Cliff.
I, I, Rob, if I-
Yeah, sure.
-say that, I know we've got a million people going on, but parking should be, as, as the village continues to grow and have more businesses, and more apartments, and more people are living here, um, it needs to be, we need to bump it up on that priority.
Okay.
Rob, I speak, oh, sorry, can I? Rob, I've called two different engineering firms about parking lot studies, or all parking lots or parking in the, you know, the downtown area, and, uh, the cost from, the bold estimates I got were around ten thousand dollars to do. Now, they would come and they would, uh, do reviews of when the lots were used, when they weren't used, they review the, the, uh, parking lot, uh, signage, they review how many people are using the parking lots, and that kind of thing, recommend signage for the future, maybe, uh, our layouts for parking lots. maybe, uh, our layouts for parking lots, and I think that's something we should look at, and hire professionals, give us an opinion on what we can do, what we can do in the future to expand our parking, because it seems like, well, you take, for instance, on a small as a Saturday, there wasn't a spot that we had in the George parking lot, and the streets were packed with cars, and, uh,
Which is a good thing.
And, and I know that the big George lot on Church Street is very frustrating for a lot of people that are now, now living downtown and didn't use to, and it's finding a parking spot that's relatively close to where the apartments or the B and Bs are.
Trustees, would you be interested in, I know it doesn't speak to the immediate issue that's brought up, but the larger issue of parking, would you guys be interested in going in this direction and trying to get quotes for a firm?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Could I speak nicely, because I was actually going to speak on this issue.
Yeah, just, just one second.
One little question, um, and, I guess, does the doc fall under that sign, the study? Parking study and signage fall under ARPA money? ARPA funds?
Well, if we can take a look at that, like, first reaction is no, but if we can take a look at that.
We can find the money.
Well, I'm, we can find the money.
And you have at this angle that people have moved here from New York or New Jersey and are living downtown because of COVID, so it's really caused a problem.
It's been studied done years ago.
Why, again, we can take a look at that, if there's a reasonable basis to
There was a comprehensive plan that had for dynamic.
Or if it's an arguable basis, that's one thing. If all is not pre-approved and if you need money
Oh, let's look into that.
For a use that
That'd be great if we could establish that.
Not to be allowable, and needs to be paid back, so we'll just have to take a look at that and make sure we
It rings well.
We can leave that to the board.
Okay.
We can leave that to the board.
I don't know how comprehensive it was, but I know it was possible.
Okay.
Get, get, okay, go on.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, my name is Trish Boomer, uh, I'm in Tanbar, uh, 21 Leining Street, Cuzik Falls, um, I'm a retired attorney. Um, I've done some work for the Police Reform Committee, uh, you've seen me on Zoom with some of you, and that I haven't met in person yet, it's nice to meet you. Um, I'm basically just here to kind of offer assistance on these types of issues, if anybody wants help. I mean, I've been, um, there, there are a lot of issues, um, also associated with overnight parking, and, you know, Kevin, you mentioned some of them, you've got residents that don't have places to park. Uh, we've got some restrictions that seem to be, uh, obviously tied to a reasonable objective, like snow removal and issues, but I think that the regulations aren't necessarily narrowly tailored to serve that purpose, but that going so far above and beyond that, that they prohibit parking that would be really useful for this community. So I think that there are, you know, I've spoken to a lot of different people who have interests, um, on both sides of these issues. Um, for 18 years, I practiced law where dispute resolution, um, and foreign settlements and, you know, consensus around things like this is just something I've always done. I retired so that I could, um, spend more time helping with my local community, so I'm here to offer to help if, um, and, and, you know, certainly not opposed to hiring a company, that can give us more insights as well, but a lot of times, um, some of these issues are, are susceptible to some common sense approaches as well, um, and I think I have some experience at the help, so to the extent that I can be of help, I'm gonna go.
Thank you very much, Trish, we appreciate that. And thank you for the work you have been doing. Thank you.
Could you talk at some point about having an email or something that people could write in, to suggest?
Uh, yeah, that was one of the, the things I wanted to do is, as we started getting ideas, maybe putting out a, a, some, some tentative ideas out there and have people review them and submit comments. Like, as an example, I'm up on Munsole Street, and I actually read in, when reviewing one of the laws, that on one side of Munsole Street, you're not allowed to park, and the other side you are. And I honestly can't remember which one it is and if it affects me or not, but there's no signage for it. And it's probably something that was done decades ago, and I don't remember, and I don't know, I don't think it, it, it makes much sense, there may be a good reason for it, we would just have to review it, but I, I think, speaking to what Trish has said, our community and its needs have evolved, and it's, you know, past time to address this. So, thank you. Yes?
The Doug Towne, 95 Classic Street, I just want to say I support the parking study, but I think, I, who knows, in this village, back to the year before we did something, now we can do something. So I could suggest a moratorium and any more restrictions for parking, because it seems like there's just more restrictions coming, and that's creating a more of a problem. And I, and anything that can be done in the short term, from, from Mr. Belden's property to changing the size, allowing overnight parking at Church Street, because that created a whole massive issue. So it doesn't seem like we can wait till a study is done to take some little steps of not doing any more restricted parking. And, and also, maybe we move me some decisions we've already made, or taken close to that. It's gone beyond the, um, it's gone beyond the dissent, because like I said on my street, we have no parking permit, I don't know why. I think, we went back to the days, my neighbor, who's lived there 30 years, on Thanksgiving, had two parking tickets, and they said he never got one in his life. So the frustrations are rising throughout the community, there's this issue.
Yeah.
And I don't know where that's all coming from. I don't know what's behind all that, and I guess I have, what's the rationale?
So.
What's the rationale for putting up signs that haven't been there for years?
The
What, what, what's the intent? And what's the public benefit that's being achieved?
It's interesting, because I, I can look back and I can see what got us to this point. I think there were a few things that all have kind of met to where we are now. The first one, when we changed the municipal parking lot, was actually in response to concerns we had, uh, from people who were nearby, and from the fact that we were having people leaving vehicles there, and we didn't have the laws to back up the ability to take care of it. So we took in some feedback, made the change, that caused some more issues. Um, as we've been looking into parking, we've been looking into how do you change parking, we can't just have a motion to take down a sign, we actually have to go through the local law process, which, as we know, takes a lot of time, and we have to prepare it, then we have to present it, then we have to public hearing it, and if there's something wrong with it, and then we gotta go back through the, the, the whole, the whole process, so that's the frustration that we have had, because we have been listening and we wanted to make changes, and, you know, we had a local business owner come in and say, he's at this spot, he wants to modify the parking, and the parking had previously been, uh, requested to be modified by a previous business owner, which was the original local law of 2018 that we're trying to change, so, um.
Well, as far as municipal law goes, that, that's not true.
Right.
If we wanted to change the sign, could we change it?
Yes, you can. I've, I've got the local law here that relates to the municipal parking lots, and I looked at it, and my reading of it, which I've done pretty carefully, is that the board, a board resolution can allow you to add or take away signs restricting or allowing parking in the village lots. Um, the law was basically one that just gave the overall authority to be able to designate certain areas as no overnight parking, designate other areas as, um, no restrictions on parking, but it specifically says in the law that by board resolution, um, certain areas can be deemed one or the other.
So the board has the authority?
The board.
Not anybody else.
Exactly.
Let's bug over here, sorry. Which, which law are you reading there?
This is local law number two of the year 2020. Um, and it's specifically with respect to municipal parking lots in the village of Cuzik Falls, which would include the one that I'd kind of, you know, the one that's kind of across, across, uh, Main Street from Cumberland Farms, and between the Armory and the Thorbs Building, uh, that, that main one, so there are 27 parking
There's not 50 every parking lot.
They, well, it is, right, it's kind of, I think it's one big lot that's kind of got a little space in between, but there are 27 parking spots in the middle of that lot that have no overnight parking whatsoever permitted ever. Um, not just during snow, for emergencies, not
Yeah, for weddings.
So there's 27 parking spots that can't be used by residents who live around that parking lot.
And that pushes them everywhere else.
And that pushes them everywhere else in the village where we're having issues. It affects, um, you know, any of that people that are going to be coming home, see their families for the holidays, students, holiday students are going to be coming home for winter breaks, you know, and, and, and as you said, just in general, more businesses in town, you're getting more and more consumers wanting to come to the area, you've got the Airbnb, you've got places they stay, so it becomes 27 parking spots that can't be used overnight. Um, is seemingly not the highest utility for what could be a real asset for our village right now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, those are law also pertains to the lower Church Street lot and the lot crossing the Chute.
That's correct.
Your aunt, Aunt did a sort of a headcount. And he said there are about 25 parking spots and about 36 apartments, just between the two parking lots, not the Army Connery parking lot, but the Down
Right.
by the Draw parking lot, and the, the Thorbs parking lot. Um, and not the one next to Conan. He said there are 25 spots and 36 apartments. And I also know, and I, I don't know if we have to go back to the zoning, but when I was then on the zoning committee, um, um, when someone came and asked to put up an apartment in a building right on the corner of John Church, and I raised the question of parking, well, she was going for two, two apartments, I think she was, yeah. And I raised it, and I was told, that's a commercial district, we can't even talk about that. So we put in another apartment and did not even consider the parking, that, we gotta, that can't happen, keep going.
And that entire, just the lower Classic, it has no parking overnight on that as well, which has a lot of apartments there that, uh, cars are there during the day and they disappear at night, but they go into lots around the street parking.
Not a sense of
This is the paragraph you're referring to, right?
Yeah, so the village board by resolution can adopt other rules and regulations to designate and limit certain parking places within municipal parking lot for overnight or hometown parking. So that tells me, I mean, the general provision is simply that, um, that they, so the only restriction, right, other than the signs that are out there, is the restriction that it has to, that the cars, if they're going to be overnight, have to have a valid state registration that is currently in effect, which makes, I mean, sense to the extent you don't, because if, for your residents that moved to our area, they should get their cars registered in the U.S.A., I think that's what they're supposed to do. Um, so I can understand, so that, so that part is built into the law. But beyond that, it's a matter of where things have been signage, and it, I read that as suggesting that the signage and the location and the decisions on restrictions, um, and provisions are to be done by the village board by resolution. And can be done by the village board by resolution.
So then the question becomes, if the board wants to do that, do we want to just make a decision to modify things now? Or do we want to wait until we do a larger overall study?
And I would very strongly encourage you to consider the fact that it's the holiday season where businesses and families and people are coming, and if we want them, people are coming into our village.
Um, and the board has been, and by what happened by whatever decision, I think it's become increasingly restrictive, and it's hurting. I drive by Church Street every morning before 5:00, 5:30, and see all these empty lots. And see everybody push on the street or push on the road.
It just comes
But not exactly, it's a compromise.
Yeah, yeah.
But having, and having said that, the one other thing I would caution, obviously, you know, you've got snow removal issues that have to be thought about. This isn't something that you can just do like immediately right now without having thought of doing all, or at least a, a couple of sensible carve-outs for, you know, emergent, snow emergencies, or, you know, situations where you've got, you know, the, oh, should we do it? You can't just think of it off the top of your head, but there are issues that need to be thought of, you can't just say, okay, everybody can overnight park there, now, you know, there's a snowstorm next week and Neil can't, you know, even plow anything.
On some of our streets, we have snow emergency rules, and
And that's something that could be a quick fix for that, so you just apply the snow emergency, lift the, lift the no, the no overnight parking restrictions, but apply this place, uh, snow, snow emergency.
The judge might be appointed to the community to, to come out and go to the community.
I would like to backtrack, I would like to backtrack first and tell you how this all started. There were businesses around the, uh, the parking lot that were asking for help because a lot of the people that were living in apartments and, uh, the local Airbnb and whatever, were taking the parking, parking spots long-term, and whatever moved it, so we took, the original idea was to take, say, eight spots and make those two-hour parking from, uh, nine, nine to six, or whatever the pace was. And that was the original plan, that, that was what the goal was at that time.
And it's no way that happened, because
It just, like, if people didn't use one of the forks, they're gonna flush the park, they wouldn't have to park way down the street, they could park there.
You know, when did the overnight came?
So the spots in the middle
It was magic, it just happened.
Right.
I think what happened was also, going back to that, we were having trailers that were parked there.
On the Church Street, as you say.
Yeah, okay, that's, 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 that you need to know, it's in the dress.
And, and, well, in a little bit, wanting to move, it was like you need something to say that they have to move. Um, so I think that's kind of adding into a little bit as to why people went to Church Street and went in.
Well, that's why you had to put the no motor vehicles, uh, unauthorized motor vehicles, so that it's registered and tracked and that kind of.
And we said no both.
So, yeah, so, and I, I appreciate you mentioning that there's a lot of other entities involved, such as snow removal and, you know, public safety issues, and, you know, there is a contingent of people who wanted exactly what we set up here that we're not hearing from, but we're also hearing loud and clear that this needs to be addressed, we need to get our heads together, all the people who would be involved, to figure out what we can do to modify things.
Who would, who would have
Yeah, yeah. So, we hear you loud and clear, we're gonna make this top priority moving forward, is getting this parking, um, brainstormed, hear from everybody, and see what we need to do, it's gonna work fast.
Can you set up that email and somehow get the, the info out there?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's a crazy season right now, but we can certainly try to get something going either before, uh, the new year or right after the new year, so we hit the ground running.
My, my question is, anything with Church Street and, um, the, and Upper, well, Classic Street on the I Street, that's state, so do we, do we still get to decide the parking, or does this take, you know, us?
Do we get to decide parking along 22?
Is that our decision or state decision?
You mean roadside parking or inside?
Anything
No, outside parking.
On 22?
22 is a state, okay.
Okay, okay.
So that's a question.
I just want to reiterate what Kevin said, that what I understood, that parking lot was built there was for businesses to come in and so they had to park before the businesses. It wasn't for the apartment buildings in town.
Well, historically, those upstairs, where all the businesses are, on Jackson Street, those were offices, those weren't apartments. That's happened today. I don't know why you're wrong.
Well, that's the other issue, I mean, all of our, I mean, you, you referenced the 2020 municipal parking law. The most current local law for parking is 1991. So, yeah, some of these things have been in place for thirty years.
Yeah.
Some go back to 1940.
Just to let you know too, that since we started enforcing in the past month, 23 parking tickets were issued in the municipal parking lots for overnight parking. So they were tenants that were probably parking and needing their vehicles there and going out of their apartments. Some of them were tickets that were, were multiple, insane car.
The problem is, they got so used to not getting tickets, that they said, well, they're not getting tickets, sorry, we're just gonna park today. Then all of a sudden, we decided, we're gonna enforce it, and then, I'll get all kinds of tickets.
But they are residents, they are voters, the community has changed from where it was, where it was just business, I think we need to recognize that, otherwise we're discouraging business, we're
Absolutely, we're in church.
Living in your house.
Yep, no, understood.
What we should be doing from an economic level.
Understood, understood, so, thank you everyone for your comments on this. I know there's business owners and trustees here who've been doing this a heck of a lot longer than I have, so I thank you guys for, you know, your experience, your knowledge on this, my goal is to just facilitate and get the best possible outcome out there, hear from everybody, and that's what we're gonna do. Awesome, thank you, and thank you everyone who contributed on that. Anybody else want to speak on the people-to-be-heard section? Yes?
Thanks, Chris, I live on Johnson Hill Road, and I'm a member of the Armory Board of Directors. Uh, my problem is, it's kind of small compared to what we've been discussing.
That's all right.
We, the sidewalks around the Armory, uh, don't seem to get clear to the rest of the village that. Uh, and maybe you can prove me wrong, I hope you can. Uh, it's a minor problem to us, but it's something that should be taken, that they are really sidewalks. There's no reason that they aren't cleared the same time away that the rest of the village is.
This is another thing that comes up a lot, because there's a lot of concerns about it. Um, we're stuck between, the majority of the situation is it's the owner's responsibility We're stuck between, the majority of the situation is it's the owner's responsibility to take care of the sidewalks, and the fact that we as a village also want to keep sidewalks clear, but we're limited in our equipment and we're limited in our manpower. So it would be great to live in a village where our DPW took care of everything all the time.
What are the limits?
What's that?
What are the limits?
And that's what we've tried to codify, and that's where we run into a lot of struggles with that. So, there are particular areas that we have cleared, um, in certain business areas, and at the same time, there are certain businesses who never responsibly, I don't want to say never, but typically aren't always responsible about getting their snow removed within a certain amount of time, that's caused a lot of frustration that's come to us, we've tried to codify that in the law and run into an enormous mountain of other what-ifs and possibilities and problems that have basically got to that point. So, we don't have an ideal compromise, we have what we can do based on the money and manpower we have.
And equipment.
And if, and equipment, and if we want to expand that sidewalk, um, removal, or the snow removal, not sidewalk removal, then we're gonna have to commit to more money, more equipment, change of budget, and how that factors into each year's overall budget.
Okay, I'll go back to that question to answer earlier, is it going to be limited, are you setting some place to cut off, and what, you're going to do one bit of, what else?
Neil?
Well, I have to go to the contractor that headed cleaning sidewalks last year.
What other contractors?
We did it, we went ahead and drew it, we cleaned sidewalks where it's going.
I can't say that. Go ahead.
We, we tried to do it when we can, but, you know, sidewalks, you know, priority, the streets didn't have to clean.
No, that's, that's, yeah, we can argue that.
I can answer that.
Yeah, Rick?
I can answer the one question with Ed and you. Ed's son went to work at another location, so it's just him, and he has said that he can't do it. The Army Board has also asked Jerry McCullough, and we even tried to hire a person that said that they'd come in and shovel, but the insurance company said, you know, what's their insurance, they're in trouble, he doesn't have insurance and such. So that's the kind of thing that we're at, we are doing all of the steps and the walkways. What we're asking is if you can, and we realize, like everybody else here, short-handed, and you do help us out, maybe you can do all of that, but we're just asking if you're up in that area with the, what do I say, little bobby cat.
Sidewalk, sidewalk and flower.
Yeah, if you could just scoop it up, because we had taken care of it in the past, and we was able to, therefore, if anybody knows somebody that we can hire to do it, um, we're good with that too, it's just we're at a point right now where we're worried somebody's going to be coming into the town offices or to pick a ball or two in the Army, and they're going to slip and fall, and then we're going to be involved in an issue because we haven't properly taken care of the lots, so we're just asking for help here, if you can help us.
Well, normally when I do it, I usually go on Church Street in front of the Army. All, also we need to do is kind of ask, take it, because we want a person to the sidewalk, outside the Army. Like, yeah, it's kind of that same fact, so, you know.
You could, if you could, that, that would be great, because, you know, we, we totally understand everything that you've got going, especially when you're in a town.
Have to spend five hours on a truck farm, jump into that thing.
Yeah.
And another three, four, five, six.
Yeah, and, and like I said, if somebody, if you know somebody that fits that criteria, like Ed Ranger or Jerry, that can do it, we're happy to do that too, we're just, we're just trying, obviously, we're not the youngest guys in the world, so to be out there shoving, probably isn't something that's within our means, but we, we'll work with anyone.
Isn't that why they invented boycotts?
What's that?
Isn't that why they invented boycotts?
Yeah, well, all right, thank you, thank you for the concern, but we'll, we'll certainly talk and see what we can do, I know we've had really good groups come to us and say, hey, can you, you know, when you're doing, can you swing by and, and, you know, snow clear our driveway? We've been stuck because we can't, but I understand what you're saying completely, so, thank you, we'll bring it back and see what we can do, and I'll ask around if there's anybody else who would help, maybe a football team or two wants to step, step by a couple of times.
We're too busy.
All right, uh, anyone else, people to be heard? All right, let's, uh, let's move on, thank you. Uh, let me get to my stuff.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys. All right, uh, reports. Trustees, um, you guys have the reports in front of you, we did not get a treasurer report, uh, this time around. Uh, things have been busy, as the office will, will definitely confirm, just weren't able to get a treasurer report in the last couple of days. So we'll move to the police report, chief.
And I know I pretty much get out of here, so I'll make a quick, the calls from November were eighty-nine and October ninety-four, the end of the year, one thousand four hundred and one. Um, I think all the trustees have the reports in front of them.
Yep.
Um, that's the type of call that you want to. We are partaking in DWI crackdown during the December fifteenth to January first, um, so we'll be out, um, participating in stateide on D O E R. Um, we did issue fifty-six parking tickets for the month of November, um, so we are, um, chasing them down. I'll make some people come in and talk to me about it, and we'll be able to work on that. The toys are joy, it's exceptional, and I have to say.
I'm sorry, how's it like for today?
Yep.
You're doing it right.
Marie's got them, and we're, we, I, I would say, Marie's done a fantastic job, we raised, I would say we're pushing close to four thousand dollars, two thousand?
Easy.
Is there a special age group who would go to the toilet and then you spend, you know, kind of? I'll go buy something, I don't, I don't know enough about it.
Whatever you choose, I mean, it's, it's been a great success, we just keep the people wanting, we used to partake in toys for tots, that's, they're staying local, so I can, how many families do you have there?
I'm up over thirty right now.
At this point, I would suggest just checking with Marie before you spend money on something, because Marie's got pretty good, bring her out of the pool for what she needs, she's got her on the list, unless she do it now, so, you know.
We're also taking cash donations because we're forever providing meals to these same families. So we're gonna be doing, um, gift certificates from tots, so that people can buy the food directly from tots, which is, et cetera.
Chief, chief, we donate our tips at the store, so if you top the area in one month, we'll, they'll choose you about five hundred bucks a month, so, something we can do.
It, it, I think our bill off of, off of this year, it's going to be response that we got for next year, it's going to be even bigger and better.
Right.
The chili cookout, I think we've got five teams that are, are taking so far, so that's going to be a January fifteenth at Samar. We're excited about that, it's one of the first ones, and then Chicken Blizzard is scheduled for February nineteenth at the Unahua. Um, and we're also in the process of finalizing our Cornhole Tournament, um, that we anticipate the Army is giving permission to have it there, so we're gonna have a, we're trying to get something going each month in a warm month for the community, and right now the response is, is pretty good.
That one's twenty-ninth of January, it's a Saturday.
Which one is?
The Cornhole Tournament at the Army.
Oh, nice, okay.
And that's been approved by the Army.
Okay.
Chief, what's the Chicken Blizzard? Chicken Blizzard is going to be a chicken cookout outside of Samar.
Bless you.
Um, and we're going to be raising money for, um, St. Patrick's Day, and we're also going to be raising money for the,
Food pantry.
The.
Food pantry.
Food, so, um, the Unahua is a pool of cooking, um, we're also bringing a band in, and so it's going to be something more, it's going to be for something to do. We're hoping for snows, for chicken.
The last one we had, we had.
It'll be a lot of fun, I think.
Last meal we ate.
Well, we'll be going now, so.
He'd like to be involved.
Um, our recruit is graduated, will be out, will visit Samar on the twentieth.
Yeah, he's doing great, he loves it.
And yes, it's now be one of our locals, Jonathan Warner, um, we're excited about getting him back out of patrol, like I said, he starts on the twentieth. He's already been out a little bit doing some field training on the radar and such, but I, the twentieth will be with us for, for this point on. Just on, get it done, we're quick, uh, we talked about the courts helping us out with brand, and the, we've made a third arrest tonight, um, in records, the ban whistle that occurred back about a month and a half ago, back in September. Uh, we've been working on this, we've made two arrests already, and a third will be made tonight, with three additional individuals that are going to be arrested over, hopefully, within the next two, three weeks. We're working with Vermont, and they are juvenile, so it's hard to, you know, we're working with youth court, we're working with family court, and we're working with criminal court. So, we're not going to be able to disclose names on the individuals, but just to let people know, and we are in contact with the, with the victims of these vehicles, so that they can follow up with this attorney's office for restitution. So, it, it's over ten thousand dollars worth of damage that was done, um, and we've likely located all the six people that were involved. Other than that, I wish everybody Merry Christmas and save New Year and, uh.
I just have a question about the boys, would you work with the school district to determine the families?
Um, we did get some names from the school district, we've received them from several, um, other, uh, groups in the village in town, and some people have reached out directly to the police department.
Would you have the locations for those, if, if you have locations for your toys?
Right, for next year. I think because the way this took off, and we're finding out there was a lot of organizations out there, that maybe we need to just sit down with all the organizations and try to.
Because we work directly, I work there, because I'm the social worker at the elementary school, and we did a pickup, but if I could consolidate it at the village, I would, I would do that.
Yeah, yeah, next year, I mean, by all means, it's, I guess it was a great success. I think everybody start, pull together a little bit more next year.
Yeah.
I'll watch for it, and we can just put our box under the door.
Marie's gonna need some help, she's done a fantastic job on this, and, uh, without her support, we would be, with a bunch of toys sitting in the police department, I'm letting it.
I've been having a lot of fun.
Yep, they've been involved also.
I mean, people respond.
The schools, the church, um.
Any, uh, any other questions for chief? Looking for motion to approve the police report?
One second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed or abstentions? Carries, thank you, chief. Uh, next report is, what is the next report, code, Mark?
Marking.
Okay, everybody has, uh, my report there, I can't remember what else, it's pretty basic, not, not too much changes. Everybody have any questions they can ask for, this is the time of report, you know, uh, we're just proposing, like, um, maybe something we're working on currently.
It's all for her to pull together now, as you can all talk for the last couple of days of emails.
Speaking of, now, I'll keep you, uh, turning, the money runs out at the end of December, is that true, or not, for the then extension?
Uh, we've reached out to the state, they're open to an extension, they know the status, they're pleased that developments have started.
Yep.
And they're going to be receptive to, you know, this.
I knew we talked, we mentioned.
Right.
Yeah, so. Apparently, the, the agreement does expire, but they're open to a further extension, I just wanted to make sure.
That, and with the other property acquisition we're pursuing as well. Yeah, yeah, yep.
Mark, is that, is that, is that a priority to get that down before, before?
Not to get the extension, it's happening now.
Not a half of it, because one of those doesn't have title.
It's still, right. So speaking of titles in the county, I, I think we should contact our county legislators regarding, uh, one Center Street. It's been, if the property was in bankruptcy, and the county had it released to back at the county, that's the one where two people bought it and didn't look in with it for years, ripped all the plumbing out of it. And there's a local individual who wants the property, and we've been, him and myself have talked about the company about the property, and it's lapped out for so long that every year the property gets worse, unconditioned, and if it doesn't happen fast, I'm afraid that it's going to be the end for this property, and it's going to just cave in and there's nothing left.
Probably has to.
Oh, I know it has, and he did, the person wants to take ownership of the property, he's willing to take that, that, that chance on this building, which he thinks he can save, and county is ready, I think maybe we could reach out to Jeff Wise-Ackley and Chris Jerry, they could say something, because it's sad that the state is.
Is that a lot of property?
It's out of bankruptcy.
You know, Kevin, we can also bring up, um, getting the other property, one fourteen church, back on auction, because we had talked about getting that for the Woods Brook, and then we realized we had people interested in, in doing it, and we got to see the building.
Yeah, I asked about that one, but the, the, the state put restrictions on foreclosures because of COVID, so that, I think that's under that new law.
Let's follow up, Andy.
Doesn't, doesn't seem to make sense, because I said to the county, it's a little, it's a made whether you.
It's council.
I know, but, and, and, there's a moratorium on foreclosures, Frank White, I think they said.
It doesn't make sense, because, uh.
I thought that ended.
Yeah, not to my knowledge, I've been in court, uh, taxing foreclosure proceedings, they're, they're moving.
No, that's what the county told me, so they don't know what the procedures are, or rules are.
Well, we'll sit with the county attorney handling the tax foreclosure last week, so, they, they're moving.
Well, we'll, uh, we'll follow up with them on that property, and we'll reach out to our legislatures, um.
I mean, there's also the property next door, which the county owns, American House Property, which I think some people from the, the new pizza place down there, who's, who's, by our, and, and great, maybe they can put that up for auction as well, maybe some of the buyers are parking there, you know, would help the parking situation, used to consume it.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
Mark, uh, twenty, is that, I thought that was from the, no, is it the corner of that?
Twenty all is one, the mayor was supporting, I would like that it got under this program.
That's one of the corners.
One, the first one, it's got the arch wall.
Yeah, it's one across the street.
Correct.
It'll be.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Mark, one last question, you sent an email about, um, firehouse sign, L O B sign.
Yes.
Is that ever get addressed?
Uh, no, you put that on the agenda, it's not.
What was it?
The firehouse, firehouse.
You were going to bring it up, Mark.
Firehouse request for what?
An L O B sign out in front of their building.
Oh, jeez, I do remember that.
So I'm going to put a sign under the existing sign, an LED, legally, you know, when you look at our local law, I was questioning it, certainly I didn't want that to be my call as far as, um, you know, I want the board to know what I meant, because, uh, if you look at the law, it's, it's like rotating, flashing.
Yep, maybe that to Andy, I love to see that request.
And so they're talking about putting up something that's, uh, there's more amusing, which, I don't know how you interpret, I mean, that's a pretty great sign.
So, so my, my desire, when I read that, about the local law, was that I could read the local law so that the sign isn't excluded by the law, but certainly would be capable of violating the intent of the law, just have no one play on the sign.
Well, then, what you.
But I thought, I would say that our building inspector could be in charge of what's acceptable and not.
Oh, it should.
I just want that.
I said this when I was hoping to get out of the local law, I read it, that's not what the law.
Yeah, dude, when I want to get over.
Ready for the chocolate.
Oh, yeah, I get it. Dinner?
This was my dinner.
I didn't have any.
But now, here's the neighborhood, I mean, you're just on Main Street, doing some.
Toast, I think that's about it.
It could have blacked out, you could certainly pull up, use this for a sign that would be incredibly annoying, offensive, and dangerous if you really put your mind. Now, on the other hand, it's my fire court, and you might think there's any of those things, probably not, but like you said, once the sign is there, you're telling the authority what's on the sign.
Well, you can also argue a commercial use too, like more music advertisements for businesses, so it's a commercial use of the sign. Most teams tag you down the street, so it's a commercial purpose, not just a.
Well, it sounds like that start popping up everywhere.
But this, wasn't anyone lettered from the police, uh, the fire department saying that the hours of, didn't they say?
I think.
They were willing to consider that. Right. Something about that.
Yeah, I think that was a follow-up email from the other.
Right.
Um, but, you know, like I say, but if it's, you know, that was, when I sent it to you guys, I had before I'd actually had talked to him. He had just gotten actually saying what they wanted to do. I looked at the law and I, I went and looked at the sign and I think the law, this is, you know, this could be a can of worms.
Yeah, you know, was that, uh, the church street, Main Street, um, church street kind of, what to get it? Where the, where the, where the.
That's just terrible.
Far, the yield sign.
Yes.
Between, when, um, church street and Main Street come together to go on the hill road, isn't that right there?
No, no, it's down, it's down.
But I'm gonna distract you, that yield.
Right, it's in front of the fire department, calling the staff and the yield.
That's a, yeah, that's.
Too far.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go there. Just the fact that it's, it's on the main drag, it could be a distraction, it does set back off the street a little bit. It could be a distraction, if it's flashing, if it's rotating, you know, all the reasons. There are many things that are, at both points in our law that prohibit it, that type of thing.
But it stayed, it stayed in the law, but it has to be like important, important information, like they could, it could be an empty sign to be right if it was just important information posted.
What did your, did your, is important?
I mean, it is the fire department, I hope that they have information.
And that's the thing, that's why, that's the other reason I come to, I don't wanna say no, dude.
Right.
And, and not secure.
I mean, there's a reason why I'm looking for it.
Well, you know, so it may be a law for that type of sign, you know, more than just a sign, it's gonna fall apart. But maybe, you know, in a neighborhood, you do limit the.
See, why, why do we do this? Why, why did the time drop this up? We're not gonna solve it, Mike, it's not on our agenda. Why don't we let Andy, little hallway, why don't we have a conversation and put it on our agenda for next month when we can actually.
And I'm not even sure they have the money to add that.
I also think that someone, a representative in the fire department should be here to speak under the app and tell us what they're representing.
Maybe it's.
Because, you know, Mark's not the liaison, he should be the one presenting to us about.
Or.
Maybe it's to give us an example of what, what it's gonna look like.
I asked for an example, I said, oh, I'm not just a part of it.
Deb?
I'm on the side down in the city somewhere.
Deb, did you wanna say something?
Can we, can we give it?
Yeah, you were at the store, the zoning board, right, the, the board chair.
I was, I was just gonna say, yes, that was kind of my question, but also, um, you know, when somebody's putting up a fence or doing, putting up whatever to do. The zoning board, they have, they have to send, um, registered letters to all the neighbors and see what they think, if there are things, doesn't that happen?
I can say, yeah, people.
So maybe we need to do, do some, something like that.
We can, we can talk about it, Andy, we can determine plan of action. Like I said, I don't think the fire department's looking to do this tomorrow.
Okay.
My, my, the point was, the library did the beautification of a path and they did all that stuff. And they put, when they put the lights in, they didn't consider the neighbors, the back way lights, the parking lot lights, and it shined right into neighbors' houses. They're not down pointing lights, they're just. And it, you know, just so that it, it doesn't even, the neighbors know.
I guess about his neighbor, I don't wanna look at Clark Rizwald's house. That, that's a signature. The neighbor of Clark Rizwald, the whole, the whole bedroom, he gets only. So, you know, I guess, this could, you gotta think about neighbors as well as part of that.
Alright, um, so thank you guys and, and, and bonus points for the, uh, Clark Rizwald, uh. We'll, we'll work on that. Anything else for Mark with, uh, Code? Um, alright, thank you, Mark.
Do you want to get a written letter into the state's board requesting the extension of the regular rate?
Okay.
With the updated budget and the proposed schedule.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on the next day or two.
Yeah, that's gotta go.
Absolutely, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Mark's report for that.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Carries. Um, thank you, Mark, and. I, I, I know that we, like, I see this day in and day out, the board sees it a lot too. Um, the, the work that has been done by our village employees with Mark and with Neil and with our office staff and with Andy on the Woodsbrook. It's just been amazing and awesome and they see a need, they take the initiative, it gets, keeps things moving, so thank you guys for that. Really, really been great. Uh, clerk, deputy clerk report, anything you wanna highlight? Miss clerk, deputy clerk?
No, basically, we were working on the December billing, um, it'll be out hopefully next week, it's a little slower than we'd like, but, um. We've extended the, uh, payment due date until mid-January, so for anybody that's anxiously awaiting your, um, utility bills, they are coming. Merry Christmas.
And I'm, work on the letter, still.
Yes.
Any questions for clerk deputy clerk report? I will take a motion. Thank you Bobby, thank you Deb, we're about to approve the clerk deputy clerk report. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Carries. We have no, um, community service report tonight because our community service director has, um, resigned his position. As community service director. Um, it is a great loss and I'm very sorry to see him go. Um, he has served in that capacity for quite some time, um. And, uh, we now have a, a, a pretty gaping and important hole to fill, uh, for what Jerry McAuliffe had done. Um, and, and the value he saw and what it did for our community and for a lot of the people who are getting, uh, into some trouble and needed some, some, some good people involved in their lives, so.
I see that too. He also uses his own equipment, not just, he knows resources, but he uses his own resources to make a lot of things happen. A lot of little things that made the doors look good.
Yeah.
Those are the, the usuals for.
Yep. Yeah, so, um, I just wanna publicly thank Jerry McAuliffe for everything he did, uh, for community service, for the village, and he still does.
I talked to him the other day, and the problem is, is this whole bill for him. Because he, the kid, the last few kids that have been involved in the program just stopped coming. And they basically told him, yeah, you can go ahead and bring the pack into court, let those North Community Service Hounds, and we're just not gonna shut up. Cause they're, they're not gonna send us to jail, so, you know, we're telling them. So it just became very frustrating to make the move again.
Yeah.
Well, I think the courts need to step up and, and make sure that they do the details well.
And include the laws too.
We lost Neil.
What's that? Um, so, let's move on to the highway report. Bobby, anything you wanna highlight?
Yeah, trust, if we pick up this gun. People still are putting them on, on the street and on the sidewalks.
I still have leaves that I will put out there for Neil, I'm just kidding, I won't do that, I won't do that.
Can you see my water pipe, it's, it's.
It's almost a month after, you know.
Neil, we're talking about leaf pickup, go away for another couple minutes.
Halloween, Halloween decorations for all, um, Neil is working with, uh, on the, the Woodsbrook. Any else, Neil, I don't know if I can really see on there, this, um, other than you're going on vacation.
Um, going on vacation and won't come back for, till twenty twenty-four. Actually, I'd like to see, we could advertise for, uh, full, uh, he, the person I've got in mind, really, I'm gonna be full time, he's a. Top quality mechanic and I think we could, we could have that fulfilled as far as helping keep the cost down, maintenance of vehicles and equipment and stuff, so. I think we're probably gonna advertise first.
Did he see the L?
Yes, he does.
And, and we are, we are down one full-time DPW employee from our normal budget.
I wasn't gonna do this when I came back, but this guy's really anxious and, you know.
Well, you know, we, we know we were down an employee, we know we need one, and we, we went to you and said, you wanna put it out, advertise now or wait? And you said, let's wait and see how things work out. Do you want us to, uh, advertise for?
I don't know, because he has advertised now for another employee.
Full-time with a CDL license?
Well.
And mechanics skills?
It doesn't have to be full-time.
Andy, how to, what's the best way to advertise for a full-time employee? Do you wanna include all the specifics we're looking for or just kind of keep it generic and see?
Well, I think if you're looking for CDL with mechanic skills, that, that you got one, absolutely.
You good with that Neil?
That's the position, you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need a motion to advertise for a full-time, uh, employee?
Is it full or part? Well, it wouldn't be full time, it'd be as needed, you know, we.
So part-time.
If you're just looking for a part-time. Just, just a little bit more like, uh, seasonal, and maybe it's personal.
So you're not looking for full-time, you're looking for an as-needed?
Yeah.
Okay.
You just said that, well, you said before that we don't have demand power, as you all are struggling, so if we have it in the budget to be full-time, shouldn't we do full-time?
Well, if we can do whatever we want. He's the one who decides what, I mean, it's his department, so he can.
Well.
Well, no, you know, he can advise us, we.
Well, the, but the question being, the need right now is more specific to equipment maintenance. And as we look to next year's budget, you'd, you still would probably want another full-time employee.
That or we can turn the money forward to something more seasonal and fully.
Okay.
How central.
So, future discussions to be had. Um, okay, I, I, I would like to see another full-time employee added in, um, possibly also, what's that?
He, he said he'd work for a part-time.
So Andy, if we're gonna do more of a part-time or seasonal as-needed, how, do we have to advertise for that? How do we advertise for that?
Well, if you can advertise for it, you can hire a part-time, I agree with, with Mark, that, that's not an issue, you can hire a full-time, so we should advertise for that position.
If, if we hire a part-timer but we'll, but wanna do more hours, like, is there, where, where's the cap? Where's the limit?
Uh. Is it union position?
Full-time would be, seasonal is.
I don't know, Mark, is part-time have to be union or not?
Well, I think your point, where with a full-time, if we don't work a full forty hours or whatever. Because it's, because it's no part-time position on a seasonal. Right.
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to review this with, um, our labor council, Elaine.
But can we, can we make the motion to approve it based on Elaine's decision? Can we do that or no? Kind of mean, on Elaine.
You can authorize for advertising for the position as needed upon review of labor.
So this is a full-time or a part? No, so it's, it's, it's really a part-time, it's not a full-time position, but we can advertise it and we'll get to find out what they have. But won't, won't this guy have to know whether he's getting, uh, retirement benefits or health benefits or?
I think if we're advertising it as part-time, then.
We could go, so, discuss that. Yeah.
Okay.
If you advertise a full-time job and do thirty hours a week.
No, you wouldn't be able to do that, and if it's, if you're advertising a full-time job, that, then it's union-specific and we, we do, yeah. The more, the more question is, if we hire him part-time but wanna do full-time, how does that work? What do we do to be, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot by doing it wrong initially and that sort of thing? Yeah, okay. Um, anything else for Neil? So, we're not, we're not, or we are gonna do what Andy said, advertise for a part-time position subject to approval, discussion with, uh, Elaine.
I think the motion may wanna say, uh, authorize advertising for an employment position with highway department upon review by labor council.
Did you get that? Does somebody wanna, so move to that?
Oh.
Bobby, thank you. Uh, someone wanna second that? Thank you Kevin, further discussion? All in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye? Um, abstentions or nays? Okay. So move, thank you, great. Uh, looking for motion to approve the, uh, highway report?
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries. Alright, sewer department, uh, report is in front of you. I don't know if you have anything in particular to highlight? As always, they're kind of around doing a little bit of everything. Unless there's any questions?
Just so you're aware, Keith is still out, so.
Okay.
So, so it's down there.
Okay.
Down there, so sometimes I'm sending it back to the sewer, I'm pending.
As, as needed, okay. Alright, um, trying to think, something I was gonna say, oh, there is some, we started to have some discussion about possibly setting up some, um, temporary fencing. Um, and we'll have some more, uh, over at the, um, uh, the, uh, the, the Leach Eight, by Leach Eight Pump. So we're gonna have some more discussions on that and we'll be bringing some information and some quotes to you guys in time, probably for the next meeting.
Oh, I, I was down there, the, last weekend, and I noticed that the railroad has posted all that property down through there. Who, who owns that property, Neil?
The railroad.
Right, in, right in Bear's Pond?
Pretty much. We, we gotta run away now to that, we take off, so we can have the.
They own a lot, but I also think they may have encroached a little bit too much in a couple spots where.
Like they encroached on Bear's Pond because they dumped gravel right into the pond, which, and it pulled, pulled ponds all brown out and the, what the dirt gets pushed into it. Which I'm not too happy to hear about.
No, I'm not too happy to hear about that.
It's a little boring.
Yeah. And we're off track, ba-dum-bum, okay. Um, unless you guys have questions about, uh, sewer report, I'll take a motion to prove. Thank you, thank you, further, uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Carries. Finally, water report, anything to highlight, note, ask about? Craig, anything you wanna highlight?
Nope, just off the night.
Alrighty. Um, yeah, unless there's any questions, looking for a motion to approve? Thank you, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carries, great. We are done with reports. I have in the, uh, meeting that we're, closed the public hearing, but we've already done that. Uh, so we're gonna bypass that for just a moment. And. Uh, minutes, we have, um, the November ninth regular meeting minutes up for approval, unless anyone noticed anything about it?
I'll make a motion, we can discuss it in this event.
Thank you Bobby, need a second? Thank. Huh, right. A further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Opposed? Carries, uh, alright, carries. Uh, trustee committee report, start in the far end please, Craig, and we'll just move across.
I don't have any.
Okay?
I just got, uh, wondering if we can advertise it, or not advertise, just put something on our webpage that. Our fire department needs people, I was talking with the chief, that, you know, we're lucky to get four or five people to roll out. I just wanna put that out there sort of publicly, but we, I don't know the reason why, it's just we need people. And maybe we can, maybe we can recruit somebody through our webpage, you know, I don't know. And, uh, how's that posted, Peter, in the brief?
Um, I have the three quotes here.
Actually, why don't you pass those through while we?
Yeah, so here's the three of them. We got the third one in today, so that's why you guys didn't get it, um. We had the Pitney Bowes that we were looking at, that was the government contract, we were looking at that to be the good, uh, the better of the three. And the one that came in today is a little better. Denise thought the price was better on that one, so that's the one on top, that's. That's Repeat Business, who we are currently, um, working with, who takes care of, um, our copy machine that no longer works. But, um, they've been, we've been working with them for quite a few years. So, the pricing on that top one, it was the better deal.
So you guys can keep looking at that, because we have that later in the meeting near the end in the agenda to discuss. Anything else Bobby?
No, good thinking.
Thank you, okay, enough tellers, Kevin, are you next?
Yeah, I was still digging into the Jack Pataniel property, we went down to the county office and, lo and behold, he pays taxes for the last two years.
No kidding.
Seriously?
I talked to the, the girls down there, and they all know him very, very well, they talk to him quite often. And, uh, one of the girls typically writes down the people's phone numbers. And she was out that week, I checked, and all back the other day, and she, one phone I retrieved right down was his, so they still had no contact. I said, we're not gonna check or something, no, he doesn't pay electronically, they don't have any way to track that.
Oh.
But he's, they said he's still in Jersey, so just something aware. So what?
Unbelievable.
So close.
I spoke to the chef all early in the year, with them at the land on the property.
You know what, I have been so reluctant to do that. We have tried to reach out to him, he's capable to, to, to handle the situation and he's not. Kevin, I think you're right, I think we need to pursue eminent domain.
He could, he could come in tomorrow and block off the freeway, there'd be almost no access to the greenway. He owns all the way from, he owns on the other side of the river, he owns from, actually, where they put the picnic tables?
Mm-hmm.
And the benches there, he owns that, for some reason when the state put, did the Church Street Bridge project. They got, they said, they told me they bought it, but they actually didn't, because it's still in his name. And they just ended up putting picnic tables and benches there. And, uh, he owns from there all the way on the freeway up and back to this property. So it's three separate parcels he owns. The one by Church Street Park and Lot, he could also block access to that parcel too if he wanted to. And then the, uh, the two properties on the slower, uh.
I drive by that sidewalk and I'm, it's getting worse, it's not getting better, and that's gonna take out twenty-two. And all of a sudden, everyone's gonna be like, oh, you can't go through twenty-two in Houston Falls, and everyone will come and will be like, where were you for four years?
And if someday that, that dust came in and our Route twenty-two is compromised for long periods of time, or.
It's gonna be a mess, yeah. Point taken, anything else Kevin? Thank you, if I, uh, need sleuthing, I know if I'm going to, Bobby?
Uh, the only I have is that I sent the, uh, draft of the rules and regulations for the dog park.
Here.
So, I, I know her book is on today, but I don't know, I even have the olive operation, I'm nervous, I don't sure what we want to have olive operation.
I do have those up here. So, and I have it on the agenda later.
Oh, okay.
So when we discuss it, we can modify and edit as we need to, and I'll leave it up there so anyone can review it real fast.
Is it all named John or Josh?
Yeah, I would think.
Mm-hmm. That makes a lot more sense, that's easier, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll come back, is there anything else Bobby?
No, it's all right.
Thank you Megan.
Um, I think I.
Deb?
Just wanna thank Mark for keeping us all updated like a lot on what's going on, especially with the Woods Brook. Good to know what's happening.
All right, great, thank you. And on to old business, I still have not set for meeting for the transfer station, because I'm an awful person. Uh, so I'm looking to have that tabled, um, and obviously, we're gonna have to do that really soon because the new season is starting.
Motion to table?
Should be like a motion to table and mock the mayor at the same time, I would accept that. Um, further discussion? All in favor of tabling?
I'm gonna set a date with you.
Opposed or abstentions, we do need to set a date, we need to sit down in the next couple days and just set all the dates that we need, parking too.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, new business, item number one is discussion regarding ARPA funds. Um, Bobby Decker reached out to me with a really, uh, we had a good discussion, I had a good idea of sending out an email to all the department heads and trustees. To say, what are all the projects or things you're considering? That you want to consider, have the ARPA, uh, committee consider as a starting point? And I thought it was a great idea, and I said I would do it, and I didn't do it, because everything came up, so my apologies Bobby. Uh, I still would like to do that, to get the ball started rolling on that. So trustees, does that sound like a good game plan?
Can you, can you repeat that again?
Um, yeah, so we all have been, uh, throwing out a lot of ideas about what we can do with the ARPA funds. What I want to do is I want to get an email out to all the trustees and department heads. To get an idea of what projects they're thinking of, or what expenses they're, they think would be best served with the ARPA funds. I know we've talked about upcoming, uh, debt related to, was it landfill or sewer project, there was something there? We've talked about equipment, we've talked about bathroom fixes, we've talked about cement fixes, uh, for the, the, the ramp. We have a lot of ideas, we have a group who's ready to roll with this, we just need a first step, and I think the first step is. Let's give a week or two for everyone to come back and say, here are all my ideas for ARPA funds, and then the committee looks. And that, that would include outside organizations who reached out to us and said, hey, we have some ideas.
They need to know that this is it we're, we're working on. I mean, because the, the agenda wasn't out, a lot of people I know who would like to give some input.
Mm-hmm.
Might have come to a meeting tonight, but they haven't. Um, but if they don't know that we're, we're on it, that this is, this is it, we're taking ideas. There may be, I mean, I know I could reach out to the surprising because I'm above.
Right.
I know I can reach out to civic cure because Bobby's present.
Right.
But there, um, the youth center always needs one. But there are many people that we don't know about, so they need to know that this, our constituency needs to know. That we are considering things for ARPA so that they can come to us, because we, we can reach out to the people we know to reach out to. But there might be other people too. So how do we communicate that?
I mean, do we want to, do we want to open up Village ARPA funds for anybody to speak up with ideas? Is that something we want to do? I mean, it's good because we're including people who may have ideas we don't have, it's also bad because that means more people may be told, no, we're not going to use our funds for that.
Well, we can, well, it depends how we put it out there, we put it out there, we're just taking suggestions, we need to know all, and then we'll prioritize. And then we'll make the, the board or the committee or whoever, we'll make the decision. But I think we need to make that decision. People need to know, I think they'd be better with knowing they were considered and then rejected than knowing they were never even considered in the first place, because nobody knew about it.
We set up a workshop for January, put it into January, and I'll just, I'm gonna let Bobby know this, we're planning that. We set up a workshop, you know, to discuss specifically.
I think that's a good idea.
That's a great idea. Who, who, who is on the, um, the ARPA committee?
Greg.
Are you guys good?
Say Bob, because it could be Bob in front of the number.
What are your thoughts? Did you hear what Deb said?
I heard someone what Deb said.
I said, just say Bob, just say Bob.
Uh, but I, I'm all for soliciting, um, ideas.
Stand up, just stand.
Uh, I think my email is probably about the way to collect them.
We set up a parking email and an ARPA funding email.
HF Parking, HF ARPA.
There you go.
There you go.
Nobody's been bashful, my, my high experience, nobody's been bashful about asking. No, no, I think, I think Denise has presented some physically sound alternatives to what do with money. But, uh, certainly should, at least require us to consider why we wouldn't do something like that when we have. Big rooming, unlegitimate expenses that we have to resolve, that are eligible for the law. It's not gonna be a popular answer, but neither is passing along resolution to fund those items.
And adding more money to the sewer.
But isn't it better to know all the, all the different things?
What's that?
Isn't it better to know all the different things, and then we can pick, we can prioritize and go on to here. This much money for this one, this much money for that one.
Mark, how's your, uh, workshop, is it just basically open to anybody who wants to come by?
Yeah, and, you know, we're, we're in a little different position too than the village, so, I mean. Some of the same groups who have solicited us, I assume have solicited you guys. You know, so, that, those may, those may be somewhere, uh, you know, like, where we can kind of fulfill that. And you guys don't have to worry a lot, I mean, you know, maybe we coordinate a little bit along with the times.
You got a lot of money, okay.
You gotta do like exactly, just about exactly the same.
Well, we'll just send them all to you Mark, because, no, I'm just kidding.
What's that?
We'll send them all to you, no, I, do you guys like the workshop idea as well?
Per- personally, I, I'd like the idea, getting the ideas ahead of time as much as possible, so we can have some structure to it instead of an open.
Okay.
Just drop in with your sales pitch of what you want, I, I'd like to, you know, get that ahead of time so we can categorize them. And if we have questions about some of them, we can reach out to the people who come in and explain their idea, but. I don't know that we need a thirty-minute presentation on each idea at this point.
Okay.
Well, no, well, we can, we can, well, ask them to submit the ideas first is, is a good idea. I think, because then we can read them and we know what they're talking about, and then we can give them, we have five minutes, you gotta do an elevator, you know, that's.
I've seen a bunch of requests, I think at least ten requests, and some of the organizations have multiple requests. You know, so, uh, there are plenty of requests, and I guess my thoughts on the workshop were just. Was as a group, a more vetted, vetting them, but having the people there who had interest. You know, some people have already submitted it, and maybe they're not interested in being there, but vet them, and, you know, I have. I made it very clear, it has to, we have to follow the, the ARPA guidelines, because we certainly don't want to charge back our ten years ago.
That, that, that's why, was my idea of getting the ideas ahead of time, because if it doesn't meet the guidelines, I, I don't want to sit through a dependent presentation on something.
Right.
Doesn't meet the guidelines, so I think the first step is submit your idea, tell us why you think it meets the guidelines. And then we'll downselect from all those ideas, the ones that actually are eligible for consideration, and then we can look at it.
Okay.
That, that to me would save us a lot of time of screening out ideas that, that aren't eligible.
It, 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 it could be something.
It doesn't have to be a, uh, un, undisciplined shouting out ideas. It could be, you know, you could sign up in advance to make it through later, they don't all have to eat and drink at the same time. But I think getting input from people and including the community in the discussion is really important.
I think, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying it's not, but I think discussing ideas that aren't eligible is apparently rather good.
Makes sense.
You might, you might, it does, but you might also have people who don't have anything.
So can we post the guidelines for them, so, you know, you're saying, can we do a workshop, here's the guidelines?
Oh, the guidelines are like a toll.
We, we purposely pushed it back because the guidelines are constantly changing.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why we push it back to the end, I mean, people are anxious, they want an answer, you know, we're trying to balance it out. We, you know, we change and moving target, so to speak, you know. That's why I'm telling them, I'm very clear to people, it has to be COVID-related, so somehow within those. And, and there are some guidelines there that kind of give us an indication. And, you know, sometimes I think you can take the edge a little bit, but we have to be careful because, you know, we've already dealt, we already had situations where. And this is federal funding, you know, federal funding, and they don't pre-approve anything. So they could, they have the option to come back after an audit and charge them back on stuff if, if they didn't use those funds properly. I, we've had that case happen to us in the town on a bridge project, we could see it. And, you know, also I, I don't want to be in that situation again, so that's why, you know, uh, we're trying to do that, just, there's no funding coming again next, uh, summer.
Yep.
You know, so, but if one of the chief, you retire, it does make it a little bit tricky when you keep. But some of the stuff, like I think Denise is talking about, you know, the village in situations, and that's definitely infrastructure, you know, water, food, construction, they definitely qualify.
But yeah, that's all true, but I, I think if we say, yeah, we decided to use it on X, Y, and Z, and they only need to be the legit, most legitimate things ever. But if we do it all behind closed doors, I don't know, if I wasn't on the board, I'd be pissed.
The perception works against.
Yes.
Just by, because we didn't get the word out, yep.
I think it took a couple extra hours or less, but that's, you know, that's what I'm here.
So what do you do, set a date for all proposals in the end or all suggestions?
Well, we already have, we have a list, I have a list for a lot of people, that's why I say, people have been bashful about asking.
Right.
You know, they've submitted, uh, their requests, like I said, and it's, like the Armory, you know, I hate to have to list a whole heap of different things. Well, I just laughed at them.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, obviously, and they know, they're, they're not gonna get them all.
Mark, now this is, this is town also has their own list of things to spend it on though, or are you only looking for exterminable places to spend it?
Uh, no, I mean, we don't have the same issues as the village yet.
Okay.
You know, so, uh, we have some things that we want to spend on, you know, but. No, we wanna, we wanna address, uh, with the, uh, habitat development, you know, uh, there are a bunch of longing ones. Well, that side directly is.
It's hard.
They've got.
You know what, I was kidding.
No. I mean, if, if you want to play with it a little bit and, and justify the response from them to moving them into the general fund, there's, there's some. Way you can kind of play with it a little bit to, to do that, but I don't know what it is. I mean, if you're a little more, if you're a little more on leeway, if you can move funds into the general fund.
I guess my question, I mean, how did you, how long are you gonna go?
The funds have to be used, they have their program, the funds have to be used by like twenty, twenty-four.
Okay.
You know, so there is no.
No reason there.
No, there's no reason.
Yeah, okay. Um, Craig, uh, Bobby, I'll, I'll touch base with you. I think, I think it sounds like setting up an email address and getting the word out is the way that makes the most sense. Um, and telling anybody if they want, you know, to consider, uh, sending in an idea or a proposal. Send it this email address, that'll be our starting point, we're not in a rush, we have, you know, a lot of time, money's not going anywhere. And we can generically describe, very generically, what can and can't be used, but even then, that's so hard. Okay, I'll touch base.
You can also, you can also kind of like, I don't know, it's funny, like, in the legal thing, but are we, we advise that. You know, your request could be rejected if we determine that it wasn't just.
All you're doing would be soliciting ideas.
Yep.
Saying you're.
Your guy, yeah, right.
Right. Okay.
People have to be asked.
Oh, absolutely, especially if there's money out there, but no, your points, your point's well made. All right, local law number three. Um, we had a public hearing, closed it, no one came to speak about it. Um, thoughts on adopting local law number three? I'm ready to go if you guys are. Uh, Andy, do we have a, is it by motion or by resolution?
By motion to approve local law.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve local law number three. Thank you Deb.
I'll stop here.
Thank you Bobby, uh, any further discussion? Should we do a roll call vote? Or do we need to?
We don't need to.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, passes, carries.
Jeff and Murray on that, on that, would you like my office to get it filed, or are you gonna file it with the department's statement? If you simply send on that last page, put in the date we acted tonight, sign it and stamp it.
Send it.
And to me, we'll get it filed.
Perfect. Very well.
Thank you.
All right, Woods Brook Buyout Program, uh, we have numerous change orders, I've highlighted what each change order is, um. In the agenda, and I have the documents up here, I can put on the screen as well. Um, all of the change orders are things that we knew we'd kind of have to change based on certain things like asbestos, containing asbestos or not. Um, Mark, is there anything else you want to say about these? Oh, I do want to remind people that this all stays within the Woods Brook budget by approving change orders and adding costs. This is what we expected would happen, we've budgeted for this, it's not putting us over anyway.
That was the third question, I mean, we've been, it's, you know, it's been, it's been an interesting process trying to get the, you know, used to dealing with the whole. The Department of Labor stuff, you know, Andy, obviously Andy and I, Denise have been working pretty closely together as far as going all the stuff together, but, um. It's, it's been interesting, so really out of the, uh, the original estimate. So really out of the, uh, the original estimate for seven projects, there's seven houses all together. Only one, which is the seventh Hall Street, ended up being a completely clean demolition project coming, that's why they, that was the first one.
Wow. All right. So let's go through them one at a time. I'm looking for a motion to approve on the screen. Uh, change order for three Hall Street, this is removal and disposal of asbestos materials for four thousand eight hundred dollars.
No, maybe.
I have a second.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, any further discussion, any questions, Mark? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Great. Uh, carries, the second one was for, uh, twenty-seven Elm Street. Looking for a motion to approve change order for twenty-seven Elm Street. Again, removal and disposal of asbestos materials for twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. Uh, obviously a bigger property and more challenges with the demo in this one. Any questions, discussion? Looking for the motion?
Sorry.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries, great, thank you. The third one is for, um, uh, change order for one hundred eight to one ten Church Street, this is again removal and disposal of asbestos materials. This one is nine thousand dollars. Any discussion? Uh, looking for a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, I think that was Kevin and Deb. Uh, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries. Um, there was an issue that came up about removing the garage on five Hall Street to allow for easier access for demo for one fifteen Main Street.
There was another change order.
There was? Do I have it up here? Uh, is this the one?
Yes.
Yep, I have that one coming. Um, do we just need? What was that, Kevin?
I was wondering if it's extra for the garage.
It's not, right? And, and we, Neil, you said you looked into taking it, but it's not built properly for us to take it. Okay. Um, do we just need to have a motion to approve removing the garage on five Hall Street?
Yes, yeah, it's only because we're going to have to do that before we tackle the actual five Hall Street property. We need the, gain the access to one fifteen, making sure it's going to be the next project. Now, there's no route out front, you get the, uh, the haulers in there.
Right.
The haul line, so we need to come out from the back. Garage is really the only thing in the way, so we, demo garage, get out of the way, it makes it much easier to gain access to one fifteen.
So.
One fifteen is pretty good, it's a cross-sized project in itself.
Yeah, it's, it's a sequencing issue, so, you know, if the board is aware that approves that. It won't be the complete demo of, uh.
Five.
Five.
Just get the garage down there so we can access one fifteen.
Right, you know, I just thought it was just going to be a board decision, so, you know, yeah.
Yeah, it's a sequencing.
So just, were you looking for a motion to authorize them to remove the garage at five Hall Street?
Motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries, and great, thank you. The final change order is, uh, for controlled demolition of buildings for one fifteen Main Street and five Hall Street. This one is for, this was.
So this one is a little different in fact that it's, uh, so look at top number is, I can't read it.
Twenty-seven hundred.
So there's, there's more to it because there's actually, we started doing the breakdown of it, so it's, uh, well, it looks so much out, so that one's, uh, like twenty-seven hundred dollars a day in addition to the original estimate for the demo. So because there's more stuff involved, we could now take control, now everybody's got to be in the cars, you know, uh, there's going to be another expense to handle this, that's, you know, Andy presented, they have to screen, screen water on it a little bit, so, you know, just. But anyways, as hard as this goes, it's twenty-seven hundred dollars a day, so. All right, let's just take one fifteen main, so that when we're doing the budget, I'm thinking, okay, it's probably going to be at least three days. All right, in addition to the original estimate we gave for the demo. All right, then the eighty dollars per ton in addition, with eight twenty-four ton minimum. So then I asked, you know, I started digging into it a little bit, well, so they, what they estimate, multiply it all out, we're talking additional twelve thousand dollars for one fifteen Main Street to give up.
What would you say per ton, Mark?
Uh, it's, you know, he has listed as eighty dollars per ton with a twenty-four ton minimum of his, uh, trailer or whatever. But it's going to be probably, I figured, and he said probably four to six trailers.
Bobby. Can you read that? Per ton, eight dollars per ton, twenty-four ton minimum.
Right, so it's going to be, he said, he has to say four to six loads, I took it as a high number, six loads, and that's additional twelve thousand dollars. You know, that's, and then that's for the one fifteen and then for five Hall Street. Uh, he said two to three loads, so I took it for three loads, that's additional six thousand dollars.
That's expensive paint, twenty-five dollars.
Uh, now, if you see, if you remember how they did, uh, like, uh, the American House, where they did like line the whole street, and they put the hay, they have to make a barrier.
Oh, I thought, I thought they used like a ground cover once they done.
No, no, they used actually a barrier. Yeah, no, they're using, they're using one of those. To try and help contain, because what they do is they cook like plastic down and then they, and they use the, the hay, the whole plastic to catch the water, to contain the water, so the water not going into, uh, the school.
Yeah, maybe, no, we buy the hay ball or something, some birds.
Andy, we're okay to approve a change order without an exact cost because it's kind of fluid, right?
Right, so as Mark was explaining before, the, the difference here is if on these properties, to go in and do actual asbestos abatement work prior to demo, ends up being more expensive than treating the whole structure as a controlled demo, a waiver from the Department of Labor. So, no, this has been tackled, I mean, by Mark. Um, on a force case scenario would be well, and it's still within the grant budget. As long as we've got particular light item, line items for that, uh, it, it's appropriate to approve that change order with those price items.
So if we, I'll feel comfortable with this, I'll take the motion to approve this change order for controlled demolition of buildings for one fifteen Main Street by Paul.
So after we're just done with all the retainers, where do you stand on the budget for the project?
Uh, I'll defer to Mark, but our original estimate was we still had a figure approaching a hundred thousand left.
Yeah, Andy, after reviewing it, at the end of the day, I was pretty comfortable where, because we tried to accomplish all of this.
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
Last time we sat down, I was pretty comfortable where we were at. We maybe, Andy just helped me for sort of a little bit, so, but we're still within, we're still within budget, you know, we still got another building. And it's just lost seven hundred, so it's.
I'd say you're leading up to a million, just to give a little range. It's still going to be anywhere between fifty and a hundred thousand left. With between the acquisition costs, all the costs associated with acquiring and now investigating and then demolishing. So there's still a little playing part.
Was it any money left for grass seed or anything for the, for that division?
There is the next section of this, which we've already met, Neil and I met with the D E C and company, which they're working with. Which they're referring to as daylight, which, and that will be part of the next phase as far as the design of that whole area, uh, and how that's going to be handled. I'm not sure where the funding is coming from.
But, so we have separate funds for that, but to Kevin's point, I think part of closing out the contract included rea- sort of restoring the ground to some sort of simple, safe manner. So I think that there may be a future expense, if it's a big expense, if it's not something we can do where we have to do that as we get ready for the next phase.
Part of the product goes actually putting riprap in.
Yeah.
Along the stream, uh, up against, uh, the Main Street portion, you know, we're going to try and save as much of the retaining wall that's there and then, and then put the riprap against that, I think at a forty degree or something.
I don't know, we're going to buy it, it'll be fine.
You know, this is short term, just to get a look at it.
Your point is, I'll say that, but if you're still playing the budget, I think not with the current extension request, it, it's going to be about a six month extension. Once we have those demo costs, and those are going to come shortly, there'll be a more pencil paper on how much is left.
Yeah.
Then I think we approach the state and talk about the use of those funds for, call it what you want, stabilization, what, what have you.
Yep.
Of that land, that's what includes grass.
Is it required to take a fence up on Main Street?
Um.
It would have to be something fair.
Yeah. And that's call it what you want, call it security, call it what you want.
But we do have specific requirements that we have to get the land to a certain point, and we have the funds to do that.
Next step is the, now the engineering review, you forward that to me. To take a look at the properties that haven't acquired or demolished their location in relation to the birth and options for purposes of point control measures and, you know.
But to Kevin's point, I think that once we get to probably mid-January and the buildings are down and we've figured out what we have left, we may need to put out a bid for some people to do a little bit of fill, or we'll have to consult the state about if we can
Go consult the state.
Have someone come in to restore it to where it is safely for the next, uh, phase. That's great, thank you, Kevin. All right, oh, okay, so, oh, I need a motion to approve the change, this change order. Thank you, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed or abstentions? All right, passes. Mark, if you want to bring those up, I'll start signing them right now. Uh, great, thank you. Um.
Mark, what's next, is there, is there a leak on the down, next one, wait, or?
So, uh, one fifteen is scheduled to start on Friday. Uh, and then from there, the sequences, it's going to kind of be like, uh, five Hall Street, we're still waiting for, uh, the variance from Department of Labor. They did not, we were turned down, we, we applied for that with one fifteen. They turned down the five Hall Street part of that. So it looks like we're going to, they appealed it, haven't heard anything back yet, it's like, uh.
So Andy, while I sign these, can you briefly just go over the, the, the cannabis law and the decision we're, we're facing right now in the timeline? All right. Thank you.
So as, I think we generally discussed previously, under the state's cannabis law, legalizing, um, mercury issue in Maryland for cannabis, that the state law allows municipalities to opt out of certain provisions of this. And the two areas that municipalities can opt out and not allow this within the municipalities are retail dispensaries and or onsite consumption. So a municipality has some options, they can choose to opt out, meaning prohibit retail dispensaries and onsite consumption within the municipality. You can choose to only prohibit onsite consumption, but allow the retail dispensary. Or you can choose nothing, in which case both will continue to be legal within your municipality. The deadline to act on this, to opt out, is December thirty-one. You have to adopt a local law on or before that date. To legally opt, opt out.
Thank you.
If you opt out after January one, twenty twenty-two, the municipality can choose to opt back in. It's kind of like, well, we want to see how this works. And if we think it works fine, we can opt back in and start participating in that. But it doesn't work in reverse. If you don't opt out prior to December thirty-one, you are prohibited under state law from opting out thereafter. So the window is closing to determine what you want to do. Uh, if you do choose to opt out of one or both of those things, the retail dispensary or onsite consumption, that local law is subject to a legislative referendum, or you put a notice out indicating that the law was adopted. Uh, if the requisite number of petitions are filed by residents, then it does go to a village-wide referendum. If the requisite number of petitions are filed, the law is in fact final. So there's some things for the board to consider on whether you want to act. Now, timing-wise, it is a short window, but it's achievable. You can introduce a local law, you must hold a public hearing on it, as the board knows, that has to be on at least five days' public notice. The law in its final form has to be, let's call it, at your desks in front of you, in its final form for at least seven days, exclusive of Sundays, before you can legally act on it. So when I send out that email, I'll be just actually looking at the calendar and writing the number of days. Even if you were to introduce a local law tonight, the earliest that you could act on it is the twenty-third, which of course is very close to the holiday. And so some municipalities are actually holding their public hearings and proposing to act sometime in that week between Christmas and New Year. Uh, and then turn around and file that local law into the Department of State before December thirty-one. So there is time for you to act, but again, there's no obligation for the municipality to act. If you do act now, you can opt back in later, but if you fail to act now, you cannot opt out later. I understand there's also a financial component, that there are taxes associated with the sale of cannabis. And part of that tax for the materials sold within your village, part of that tax goes to the village. So there's an economic component to this as well.
Can you explain to us what the, what do you, you call it, place where you actually consumption, onsite consumption?
It's an onsite consumption.
So what does, what does that mean?
Well, think of the analogy that's been used this thing about the difference between a liquor store and a bar. You go into a liquor store, you buy it and bring it home, right? A bar, you go and you buy it and you sit down and you drink it there. Onsite consumption is designed to do that. You can go to an establishment, purchase cannabis, and sit down, and I hate to use the term, but it's, I've seen this in the literature too, it's like a smoking ban.
Like a hoopla.
So if you can sit down and consume the product on a premises.
My question was where, where do you purchase it?
That's correct. So it's only regulating dispensaries where the state does allow people to consume. That's the only thing that's, that it's regulated. You can't, you're not opting out, you're not changing the laws about consumption in the local law or anything else, only at a dispensary. That's correct. I mean, it would still remain, if you were to choose to opt out of onsite consumption at a retail dispensary, it would still be absolutely legal within the limits set to state law to, to consume this, to have it and consume it. Outside of that, 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 absolutely, yeah.
So the question was, you know, picture, you cast salt in a bar, but do people sit around smoking joints in these consumption places? Is that how it works?
That, that's how it would work with onsite consumption.
Correct. You got, you got a guideline, we got filtration system.
Yeah.
Well, so you kind of strange, you wouldn't allow a bar, you'd allow it.
And, and look, those same rules as I read the law still apply. You can't smoke cannabis in areas where you can't smoke, smoke the tobacco. Right.
In some sense, it's been passed, either some bars allow people to smoke marijuana outside where people are smoking cigarettes.
Correct.
Designated smoking.
That's correct.
And that's only.
That's legal.
And that will remain legal even if we out now.
Right, right.
I was just curious, I didn't know what they, exactly, would have to pay over.
So this is a lot of work. This is a lot of effort that we're talking about in the next two weeks to do any of this.
So.
Where, where did all, so this, this law passed a long time ago, why are we just talking about this tonight?
The, fair question. Uh, we're talking about it because we realized that the window is just about to shut, and if we don't act, uh, we're, we're kind of stuck with going for it. Um, in discussing this with Andy, uh, I think it was your son who found this, this, uh, ticker from the Rockefeller Institute of Government, that you can actually search by county and see who has done what. Uh, so you can, I don't know if it's going to show there, and you can actually see who has opted in and out and so on and so forth. Um, and what they have decided to do or not do, and you can see a lot of people have not done anything yet. Um, this is the allow dispensary side, and this is the allow consumption side. So a lot of people have not yet acted. Um, the town just officially acted? And you guys did the, you opted out of, correct me if I'm wrong, you opted out of onsite. Um, the town just officially acted, and you guys did the, you opted out of, correct me if I'm wrong, you opted out of onsite.
We opted out of onsite consumption.
Allowed dispensary, and you gave yourself a moratorium.
We put a moratorium on the dispensaries until, because there's no guidelines. The state's got nothing really out there as far as formal guidelines on what the dispensary's going to look like, and what's going to be required, uh, we're in the process of looking at updating our zoning laws, and we just wanted to be able to have that option to incorporate that into our zoning laws, so that's why we put a moratorium on it until the state comes out with new information.
But I mean, effectively, there is a moratorium on it until the state comes out with regulations. Well, frankly, if the state hasn't passed any law, obviously, we don't allow it to happen, so.
In a sense, yeah, here, we put a more official moratorium on, and yes, I felt like we're saying to the state, you know, we're doing this because you really, you've got the cart before the horse, type of thing.
Right, but there, but the obligation still with the state to regulate it before it can be.
It's just kind of like the crime laws.
Well, I understand the state has set up, I think it's called, a cannabis control board. Um, there's advisory committees, anyone who wants to jump into this business needs to be licensed by the state. When someone applies for a license, they put the municipality on notice, the municipality can comment. Someone needs to be licensed by the state before they can come to the municipality to operate from these businesses. Is it likely that these are going to be popping up in January now? Because it's a nine-year.
At least.
It, it will be a while, but.
We got, we're, uh.
In the state law, correct, but in the state law, I understand, this December 31, 2021 date is set.
But I do.
And, and again, if you do choose to opt out of one or both of those items, you can later on opt back in and can participate.
Right, so this is not binding, once this is only, I'll only opt to.
Binding and rendering, but not the other direction.
That's correct. Right, and, and the town having taken action, us being inside the town, is that, if the.
It's a different.
What is up, right? Well, so the town, under the state law, with the town in action, would regulate the town outside of the.
So, I think it. And then, correct, and say, yes, we want to have dispensaries, just because if someone is trying to site a place, and you're building along, the other communities are more welcoming to that, but we just, well.
Man, you don't want to miss this, you don't want to miss the potential sales cap.
Again, you have existing businesses here to support.
Um, did you want to share something?
I could, yes, if that's okay.
Please, yeah.
Yeah, um, so my name's Jenny Kirkland, I, we have a hemp farm up on State Route 22. We're currently planning to, um, we're in the works for planning a cannabis cultivation facility in our field, just, uh, south of our field. Um, and yes, we do have to be licensed and litigated. Um, the cannabis control committee has said that, um, the first dispensary cannot open until 18 months after licenses are given out for cultivation.
Wow.
So it is going to be at least a year and a half.
Okay.
Um, because obviously people have to have time to grow the product, they have to have time to develop the laws and, um, all the constraints around the dispensaries. Um, so it will be at least 18 months after licensing. We're anticipating getting our license in August or September next year. So, and we're probably looking at about two years until the dispensary can happen. Uh, we moved here about three years ago from Colorado, which has, you know, uh, cannabis has been in there for over a decade.
Yeah.
Um, the tax money is phenomenal. It goes towards, uh, 75, if there were dispensaries and consumption launches in the village, 75% of the tax goes to the village to do with, um, what they please, and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, tax money for, uh, you know, in Colorado, we have new parks, the schools were, um, air conditioning, air-conditioned, had the latest technology, um, the roads were great, the tax dollars were really, uh, incredible. So, yeah, I have an urge, um, to not opt out of, you know, either of those.
Thank you.
I talked to you before, maybe I should, uh, you, you're a employee, or you're other people.
Yeah, or, um, I'm an employee, um, between 12 and 13 people.
So anticipating kind of where people were on this, I asked Andy, and first off, I will apologize, I dropped the ball on this. Andy had sent me an email like a week or two ago saying, heads up, this is coming, I just, I've just been swamped, so my bad on the late, my bad on the late, I'll be upfront with that. I asked Andy to prepare a, a local law if in case we wanted to only opt out of onsite consumption, because I figured that the board collectively would either be fine letting both go, or just want to opt out to the onsite. I did not expect us to want to opt out of both of them, I just didn't kind of see that. So if the board's decision is to opt out only to the onsite consumption, as, as Andy, uh, explained before, we're, we're ready to go, we, public hearing set it for sometime next week and pass it, if we wanted to do that, if we wanted to hear from people. So the option is there if you want it, but if the board as a collective says, no, we don't need to opt out, we're fine with it rolling in, then we're fine with it rolling in, and it's done.
So, I just don't know enough about the onsite consumption and the regulations surrounding that. So if you have people going or using marijuana, you have, do you have some info that you can share with us?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, and, um, I've done a lot of research on it, and research has shown that, um, there's more crime in areas right around the bar versus areas around consumption launches. So it's, it's probably, it's the same as a bar, you go and, um, there's edibles or drinks or you can smoke there, but the same rules still apply, you know, when you come out as far as the laws of the land and, you know.
Do you want to?
Right, driving, driving on it is.
Yeah, so it's, it's just like a bar, um, but for cannabis. Um, and as I said, they're passing, there's any study showing that through, uh, increased crime rate or anything like that. And I, I honestly think that.
We're pretty much thinking it would be less crime rate because it's.
Right, right. Um, since we'll have a cannabis cultivation, um, facility in the area, um, we're hoping that, um, obviously we'll make some contacts, and we'd love to bring dispensaries or consumption launches to the area, and it'll put people to call, it'll make it a destination place. And people will not only come for those products, but they'll visit all the other businesses in the area. They'll love their food, they'll eat, they'll shop.
Oh, the dollar restaurants.
And they'll spend lots of time considering which products, sorry, I had to say.
So Andy could be, uh, vote, vote on the.
Yeah, how we, really, um.
Could he vote on the part of the dispensary and just take the action on the, uh, and still? And still have the opportunity to later on, if you want to, for the onsite.
We can opt out of the onsite consumption.
No, it's not voting for the dispensary, it's voting to opt out of it. If we do nothing, we'll have, we'll be able to have dispensaries and consumption launches.
And we can't later opt out of onsite consumption.
Correct.
So if we do nothing.
My New York state is already allowed onsite consumption everywhere else in the state that's private today. So what are we really prohibiting, I guess is what I'm asking as well, it's no different than sitting outside of one of our local establishments where they allow you to smoke outside, and that's actually worse, because you're in there drinking and smoking.
Right, it's less confront.
Dispensary will only be smoking, and it's no different, I, I, I just, I don't see what the big gain of only doing that is, and I'm certainly not in favor of opting out of the dispensary.
I understand, and I could be wrong with that.
What's that?
You can't be both, you can't have the drinking bar and smoking.
Right, right, right. I'm assuming there's dispensary, or.
One sec, yeah. Alright, um, Megan?
So I guess my concern is, I don't know enough about the consumption of marijuana compared to the consumption of alcohol. Would we know how long effective alcohol lasts and how it would carry so much to drive it? So do we know how long, I mean, I guess it would be up to the person who has dispensary to make sure that the, the people that are purchasing and using, you know, and then for our police department to enforce if someone is driving under the influence. I just don't know that enough, enough about it, and it makes me a little, maybe we should, if we opt out of it, it means we have some way of looking at it and then, you know, opting back in and supposed to not doing anything, and then we have no.
I, I guess, I guess, that's a good point, I, I might know a little bit more about it, but, um, I guess we're never going to be the experts, and we're relying on the states to regulate this and be the experts.
We're staying.
And I think if we take that approach, then we're going to need to continue to rely on them and regulate it and do their jobs.
We should, no, no.
And we're not going to be the experts.
And, and it's not, it is very heavily, very, very heavily regulated, and it's not as, as a different thing, like people didn't just now decide to stop smoking marijuana.
Absolutely, right.
So it's just, um, people are just smoking it in one place versus smoking it out.
It's not a legal cell or habit.
Right, so we're controlled.
It's more controlled and, like, you know, safer in my opinion.
And, and.
So.
Yeah, you can't license the fun, though, because you're only regulated by the state.
Exactly.
Do, do you have the card, people?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
For the bar?
Absolutely, yeah, you have departmental dispensary.
Yeah, you go to a dispensary, you have to.
And onsite consumption, it's very heavily regulated.
Actually, the answer is we don't know, because New York state hasn't passed the regulations.
Right.
Right, if it's like.
If it's like any other else, that's the way it will be.
And I'm sure it'll be the, um, municipal board, um, that's taken a lot of time to study other states that have already legalized it. And, and the consumption launches, again, with dispensaries, they won't be opening for at least 18 months following, um, the cultivation.
So then we get, and then we.
Then it says 18 months.
So, and, and thank you for every, everything you've helped us with here. So, to, to be direct on this, if we do nothing tonight, that means we are basically giving the thumbs up to, um, both, both situations. Or we can, um, opt out now, or, or move in the direction of opting out, because we wouldn't officially be doing it tonight, of just onsite consumption. It doesn't sound like anyone is up, up, opting out of both, so I think that's kind of off the table, which is reading tea leaves. It sounds like, I think the majority of us wouldn't even want to do this. I actually personally would like to do this, I think it gives us more flexibility long-term, but I don't know if that's the majority, and it's fine if it's not. So what are your thoughts?
I just feel like it gives us some time to, and I know we're not moving up to one, because sometimes like to think about it, or into it, as far as the onsite consumption, what they're looking for. Um, it gives us the, like, these 18 months to revisit it and say, we're going to do it.
I think the problem is we don't, I mean, we don't, uh, put ourselves out there, and you, as a willing community, you wouldn't miss the boat.
I think so too.
If they don't law for onsite consumption, and Cambridge does.
Yeah, we would.
Because people are making a line, so they're lining up already. I'm not saying we're not doing it, I'm just, I would like to leave a window open where we still have some opportunity. Andy said you can opt out and revisit it, or right now there's no, it's just no going back. Does that make sense?
So I'm also in agree, agreeance with, with Megan, but I don't think anybody else is, but I want to hear that, just to see if we are going to move on this or not.
I think we should leave it alone. That's my opinion.
So, okay, so you're thinking, just let it, let it go.
Business and all kinds of good things, taxes, anything that we, money we could use.
I mean, have we talked to?
We think about all the bathrooms we could add.
Put it all into new bathrooms. Bobby, Bobby, Kevin, Craig, what are you guys thinking?
I mean, I didn't believe it, believe it is, leave it alone. Yeah, just because.
That's the majority, so I think we're set, we're not going to, uh, pursue this local law, it is what it is, okay? Thank you guys, thank you very much for all your information.
I have another question, I'm not going to change my mind, but this is just information.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Uh, happy you tried to.
There's basically, you have a car.
Yeah.
You have a car, or you can stop in the.
He's going to go into it.
We're driving to it, if you realize.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen to be much, a cup of tea.
And you were saying, I mean, uh, that if you're a company, you can't be a seller.
But a cup of tea, it tastes really good, I don't know.
Right, no, you.
It's cold in here.
It is.
Oh, yeah.
Same, same, same.
Okay, so we're just going to let it go.
Doing what we're doing, and you can't, uh, once you, you guys go, yeah. Could we stand the road, so I can, because, although, you know, which I don't think is funny, because, I, I mean, I don't know who else is going to, but I know Jenny, I've been, uh, super responsible. Um, could we pass a local law to, to, to follow it?
No.
No.
Local law, so.
If you can place, or you can regulate reasonable place, time, location through zoning, which you can't do it.
Right.
Or regulate, regulate it at the state level.
Alright, I'm ready to move on and finish off our few items, so, are you guys good?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have an intermunicipal agreement, uh, with the town, um, and it basically, uh, extends it. Let me bring up the resolution right now, this is related to the assessor. Um, no, is, is it in Word? I think it's in Word. Here it is. Nope, that's not it, wrong screen, there we go.
You got it.
Screens are fun, screens are fun. So we have a resolution authorizing the extension of the intermunicipal agreement. Whereas the Board of Trustees previously authorized the extension of an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Huesic concerning duties performed by the Town of Huesic Assessor for assessor duties related to partial locations located within the village, et cetera, et cetera, now therefore be resolved by the, uh, Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesic Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. One, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesic Falls hereby approves the renewal of said intermunicipal agreement, a true and accurate copy which is attached here too, for, uh, the term January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. And number two, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesic Falls further hereby confirms that such intermunicipal agreement upon the same terms and conditions as attached here too, was and is in full force and effect for the period of January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. Uh, this resolution was, or, or, the, something similar from the town was passed last night. Um, so we're looking to have someone offer this, and second?
Who'll offer it? No, sir.
Okay, a bunch of people.
I got it.
Any questions?
Anybody.
Further discussion on this? Alright, hearing now, looking for a roll call vote?
Okay, I have Trustee Pine.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley, Trustee Alter, uh, Trustee Decker.
Yes.
Trustee Walwood.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan. I'll catch that in a minute.
Okay, alright, regardless, it passes, so we're good there, thank you. Um, we have the proposed rules and regulations for the new dog park, and next on our business, um, that were sent out. I don't know if this is something, as a board, do we need to be the ones to act to approve these, Andy, or can we just kind of set them and, and be done?
I do, I do have a copy, I have email. What, what, who's technically running this? What, is it a department?
It's a fenced-in space right out there.
I understand that, but, but.
We have no one really, I mean.
I, I, I'd act upon it by motion of the board, and then subject to change later on from the board.
I like that. So unless we have comments we want to do, or I think we, we wanted to add some language about, um, hours of operation from dusk till dawn.
Right.
Yes.
Or other way around. I was like, wait a minute, that, that's not right.
Dawn to dusk?
Yeah, that one.
Much better.
Um, operational hours, um, dawn.
Can I make a, I know I was, I was MIA there for a minute, but, it, it, people don't like to read, I mean. Thank you, I'm sorry.
People.
It's sad, to read.
Don't like to read.
So, if we make this, what if we made it into a, a do and a don't, just sort of, like, um.
You're talking about how to signage this right to make it simple and easy. We can discuss that later as long as we approve this here. And then we can discuss the best way to sign that, so that it's communicated in a very easy way, because you're right.
As a designer, I'd, I'd be happy to design this.
Yes, and that, absolutely, we would want that.
Um, but I'm thinking, you know, we, we have, in here, we have like, in the dog park, enter the dog park, in the dog park, not the. You could use those words.
Yeah, no, I don't think you can, because, I don't think you can, you know. Every law, everyone I looked at, Deb, online and examples of other dog parks that I, I went to, that's listed on there. They actually called them, oh. They actually call them an, oh, an O L A R, Ola, outside, uh, uh, off-leash area of recreation.
Oh, wow.
That's what they list in.
That's what they call it, she's a dog.
No, I understand that, but they had, they had every, every one of these things, and listed as Ola, Ola.
Is that, is that a legal thing?
No, I'm aware of that. Very well made, if it's a term of art, I've not heard of it.
Who's the enforcement officer on that?
You.
You are.
You knew that, Mark.
We're down next to the John today.
You're going to have to be on the brush, but it's like a, a little tear.
You gotta change the, the. Hammerers must puck up any, any.
Right, Dad, stop, right at the bottom.
You don't want it to puck up?
If you're making the edits and then.
I fixed responsible too. That was spelled wrong, I got that fixed.
Can you just pick up and dispose of their numbers, you get rid of the any.
Under.
Got under, where's the any?
Go back to where you did puck up and take out the any.
Right.
Got it.
Dispose of it.
And then my only other comment was, do we need to specify that only dogs are allowed in the park?
Right, and let only dogs.
I actually think we do.
I agree, I'm a teacher, we need to specify literally everything.
That should be as a thought.
So does that mean handlers not in the dog park?
You can't bring a pot belly pig.
You can't bring the pig that's running around over in music, no, no, no.
Handler wouldn't be able to dog in, that's not happening.
That was a good one this week.
No chickens.
You're not walking your chickens, you're not.
So, do we need to make any other changes to this?
No.
Can you go down a little bit?
Yeah, sure. What's that?
You gotta have the handlers in there, what if the dog bites your mother?
Yeah, yeah, no, they're in there.
She looks good.
Dog, you gotta go and break them up.
Handlers can go in, you just can't bring your pig.
Nope.
Right, the dog handler.
No, other animals are allowed, what about like rabbits, cats and stuff?
I've been to a few, but I've not gone to all of them. The handlers were in there.
They have to have a lot of park.
Be great.
Maybe that's not.
It is a dog park or something.
So are we good with this?
Yeah, but you gotta tell everybody everything.
Looking for a motion to approve these as rules and regulations for the dog park.
But not until it's changed for a being, the handlers have to be allowed in.
The handlers are.
They're not prohibited right now.
Oh, okay.
Do we have to say, um, um, okay, so it says all incidents injured are probably found out by dogs or people.
Say that again?
Uh, should be recorded to the village office ASAP, so you just call the village office and they go.
Sorry, Marie.
Yeah, that would work, someone could follow up if they're not to work hours.
No, it's, actually, our local laws specify dog control and police are enforcement entities for dog.
So we have.
What's that?
We have the dog control officer.
I do. Response I'm always in there.
The police and not, not the village office.
So to, to finish this off.
What's the regime do?
Andy, do we need to modify that to be police?
We do.
Village office and/or police?
For the same thing, a, a simple suggestion, these were circulated today, right?
Yeah.
And then people have a lot of seemingly word changes and wordsmithing to do. Why isn't that done over the course of the next month? Is this going to be open during the?
The winter?
There's a Christmas dog park up in there.
Next Saturday.
No, it can't be open until we get the sign.
Looking for a motion to table.
It's very small, Craig. I, I've heard a bunch of.
I agree.
Yeah.
Alright, I heard Craig.
Alright. Craig has put out a motion to table?
Yep.
Yep, second, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Opposed?
But let's, let's just say, I just want to say one thing, let's, I want to table this in January. Let's work, well, let's work out.
Okay.
Neil, we've spent the money out.
We have to, we have to.
Yeah, and people are waiting to use it.
That would sound like a lawyer, you gotta have the appropriate rule.
Sure.
That, that those would be it.
Okay.
And if you want to have signage that is, that varies with that language, is interpreting the language, that has to be carefully done, those are going to be the controlling rules.
Right, that's why I'm sure that Andy was involved because.
Can you find out for us if we have to say in the dog park, like?
Well, nothing says you have to, but I'm just saying that's what all the ones I, all the ones I looked at.
And I have an answer to this, but in general, probably the reason they all say that is your rules have to be clear.
Yep.
And even if it sounds like it's repetitive.
Well, it's, it just sounds to me like people are going to stop reading because it's like, oh.
But we don't have to.
They don't want to read, they don't have to use it.
Good point.
Yeah. Alright, so we do have a motion to table.
Yeah.
With the express understanding that if we don't do this next month, Bobby is going to go crazy and kill all of us.
No, no.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. So, um, voting on motion to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
Opposed.
Okay, passes, five to one. I didn't vote, so I guess I'm five to one to one. Alright, thank you. Uh, finally, um.
You skipped the Urswama.
Oh geez, I forgot the Urswama one, do I have that, oh, I skipped the Urswama one.
Went by.
Sorry. Uh, we have a resolution extending the Urswama agreements. That's not it, because I have it on the wrong screen. So, uh, this is not the standard formatting, it came from Urswama, but we're okay with it, with a couple modifications for the correct location. This is a resolution to authorize the extension of the service agreement with the Eastern Rensselaer County Solid Waste Management Authority. Um, whereas Urswama manages MSW programs, recycling, et cetera. I'm going to skip down, skip, skip, skip. Now therefore be resolved by the members of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls to extend the Urswama service agreement.
Urkswama.
Urkswama, Urkswama.
That is Urkswama.
Sorry if that's been irking you that I've been saying it wrong. Uh, to extend the Urkswama service agreement one year from the end of the current agreement, which we decided was.
It was year to year, January.
Alright, it is year to year.
Who's our representative to that?
Me, I'm the lucky one.
Can they come to the board sometime and explain just what they do?
I was going to say, what can they do for us?
I don't know, they sign a lot of checks.
Well, that's unfair, I know, but they pay a lot of money. I, I don't know what they do for us, but I don't think they do jackals, so. We get that nice calendar one a year.
I love that.
And I should be getting one.
And it was.
Very good.
Yeah, we all.
We did.
I forget, you need a calendar, there's Urkswama.
Maybe we put that in the, under the transfer station study.
What's that?
Under the transfer station study we're going to do, maybe we can look into Urkswama at the same time.
I, I will tell you that there was a time many years ago where they tried to get out of Urkswama, and it became legal, and the village did not win that.
Well, if we're signing one of your agreements, right?
Right.
And that, and that would be all done.
Yeah, so you could look into it for next year.
Yeah. Alright, well, we'll definitely add that to the agenda of the, when we meet on the, um, transfer station. So, uh, um, I, it's not there, but I'm looking for, um.
In favor and opposed.
Do I need to have an offer in a second? That's what I thought. Um, looking for someone to offer the resolution? Deb, thank you. Um, uh, sec, and I'm looking for someone in a second.
Second.
Thank you. Alright, uh, all in favor of said resolution?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? Alright, unanimous, thank you. I will save this and get this to you. Uh, did that, did that, um, so we passed around the quote for the new mail machine. I do have a digital copy of that up here. Um, Marie, did we have any particular recommendations?
Um, briefly before Denise left today, we were looking at the Pitney bows, but then a new one came in, as I said, from Repeat Business that I passed around. And we thought that that was a better price for the same scheme, so.
Which option were we thinking for the, for the first Pitney bows one?
Um, the thirty-eight oh five fifty.
Okay. And that would be thirty-eight hundred dollars plus.
Yep, the thirty-three a month, plus the three.
Plus the three a month per year.
And this one is base price of thirty-two thirteen with the forty dollars monthly and an annual maintenance agreement of four twenty.
This was the last one, right? Is that this one?
Yep.
Okay, and the last one that came in, and who's this one from?
This is from Repeat, um, Business, this is the company that we've been working with on our, papier.
And this one is the same piece of equipment?
It is.
With a, a different price of thirty-two thirteen.
Yeah, the quandary.
Plus forty a month and a four hundred and twenty dollar annual fee. So it sounds like that is the one you guys are recommending.
Yeah.
Listen, the one thing, the state contract is less, is more than what.
It, it did end up coming in as hot, as a little bit higher. Yeah.
Considerably.
What's the state contract, and then?
Denise just got this in today, so we didn't get too much further with it, other than it was less.
I have seen that before during school stuff, the, the state contract is great because it's easy and the price is there and it's approved, but.
We were kind of surprised.
We can do better.
Okay.
So that's, that does happen.
Is it a state counter, sometimes you invite, you, you, not, you invite people away from the state counter?
Yeah.
No, I just, I just, that's not my idea, that's all I'm asking.
So, um, it sounds like that's your recommendation to go with the, uh, the latest one from Repeat.
Uh huh.
Um, trustees?
Yes?
I'm, I'm in favor of that as well.
Want to make a motion to approve the.
Repeat quandarian mailing system.
That one.
It's at the top, right?
Yeah.
Quandarian I X, I X S mailing system through Repeat.
Business.
Business. Approving that quote, making that purchase. Um, it is thirty-two thirteen plus forty a month plus four hundred and twenty a year, so that's thirty-six.
And you're going to want to pursue it to the quote, they didn't know where you meant one.
Okay.
Alright, um.
So we need a motion.
Um, the, the amount greater than.
Should the amount no greater than?
No greater than eleven. It sounds like with the, uh, all the fees, it's four thousand one hundred and thirteen. So it sounds like a, a note not to exceed four thousand one hundred and fifteen or something like that, it's fine. Okay? Could I have it so moved? Thank you, Deb, second? Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Great.
Thank you.
Uh, Carrie's, thank you. Um, does anybody else have any business to bring to the board? Am I forgetting any business?
Yeah, you gotta just get the approval for the.
Oh yes, there's one more thing, I'm sorry. Um, I'm looking for a, um, motion to appoint Marie O'Neil Farinini as registrar of vital statistics for one year, beginning on January first, twenty twenty-two. This is a request that's come through the, what, State Department of Health? Thank you, guys, any further discussion?
What, yeah, what is a registrar?
Can you explain real, real fast?
Um, the registrar is of vital statistics, allows myself and Judy as deputy registrar to do, um, the online death certificates for anyone that passes away within the Village of Housick Falls. Wow, okay, that's fancy name for that. It is.
It's, it's one heck of a name, we're gonna, we're gonna add it to the, the little faceplate on the desk.
Yep, absolutely.
Alright, um, so we have the motion, all, further discussion?
We can, oh, a sash.
All in favor?
Aye.